Local.
You?
Here.
President.
Present.
Councilman Nick Markoff?
Here.
Councilman John Delgado?
Here.
Councilwoman Angela Toots?
Here.
Councilman Nick Shorten?
Here.
Councilman Ray Gasson?
Here. Also with us this evening is our Deputy Municipal Clerk, Terry Sappus. Thank you, Terry, for the name on the occasion. Our Borough Administrator Ted Erichberg and our Borough Attorney Fred Semrau. This is an official meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale on January 4th and then amended on September 18th. Public notification of date and place of this meeting was faxed to all local news media and posted in the Bloomingdale Municipal Building. As per state fire code, I'm required to acknowledge there are two emergency exits in these chambers, the main entrance, which you walk through, and then an exit to my left. If there is an emergency, walk orderly through those exits and down the stairs out of the building. If anyone has questions on that issue, please raise your hand at this time. There's no need for an early executive session. Are there any motions to remove a matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item 13G from the agenda. I'd like to have item 14C.
13G, one at a time. 13G. Discussion regards to outstanding bills for prior attorney. I know that's a matter we need to resolve, so why would we remove it?
That's my motion, and I don't think we need to discuss it tonight. Do I make a motion to remove these items?
Yes, segmented by House of Commons.
Each one?
Let's do each one, yes.
Okay.
Segmented by Councilwoman Toots. Is there a discussion on that motion? The only discussion I have is, can I just declare, I can ask you, why? This was a matter pending since the year we had, the prior attorney has sent us a threat of litigation with interest fees on what he's owed, and I think the longer we go long discussing it, the sooner we're doing this. It's a problem for the borough.
I think you guys like to pursue it.
Pursue?
These bills. I need more information about them.
Questioning the amount we owe?
Just pursuing the whole issue.
Well, that's why it was on the agenda this evening, to do exactly that. And I don't believe, Mr. Church, it's not an executive session.
There was a motion.
And we're in discussion of that motion right now, yeah.
Well, it's a matter that could be considered an executive session item. If it's under pending litigation and it gets resolved, then it would be something for the public. I want it, I'd like it resolved, so.
And therefore placed on the agenda.
Worth to listen to. Whatever the other bodies.
So then you would look to postpone this, so our next meeting?
Yes.
Which is a work session?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Can you vote for him?
Councilman Mark Markoff?
Oh, yes.
John Delgado?
No.
Councilwoman Toots?
Terry, could you speak up into the microphone? I'm very sorry. Councilwoman Toots? Yes, I want to give one.
Councilman Shippen?
Yes.
Councilman McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Yaskel?
Yes.
Okay.
And you had another item?
I have item 14C, approval of Nightmare on Bailey Avenue. I'd like to put that on the work session agenda.
Second?
Second on that motion, there's discussion now. I believe it's on here because of the timeframe needed to actually do the work to have the event.
But table only if you're denied.
Right. If it's tabled, it's not going to happen. Because there'll be no time for the neighbors who performed the event to have the time to do it.
I think it's the kind of an item that belongs on a work session. You and I had discussed it at a public events, and we had never really discussed any particulars, and I think it should be, should have been brought up on a work session.
Yeah.
Recreation Committee just approved it last night.
So if it's tabled to the ninth, then we know.
So it's moving it, because we don't have all the need, no time to build it.
Two weeks to put the event together, which should not be sufficient.
I think it should have been on as a work session prior to this.
Your motion was tabled as a second. You want to withdraw that motion, or?
No, I'd like to vote on it.
And I'll state for the record, if this matter is tabled to the ninth, then it will be read out.
It's the same as voting, man. It's essentially voting, man. There is no room to discuss it. We do not talk about it today.
The Recreation Committee approved it at their meeting, in their whole program's budget. Who recues from that's anybody?
John, will I have to recuse also this on? I don't, none of the activities take place on your property.
Correct. Is there any further discussion? I hate to see this tabled and then canceled as a result, which is wasn't happening. We discussed it tonight, that's why it's on the agenda, and then vote for approval, which means approval for road closure. Any further discussion?
What's going to change between now and the ninth? What are we looking to find out? We can answer questions tonight, and just vote.
I don't think we use our agenda appropriately. I do not think this should be, ought to be voted on tonight. I think that there should be discussion at a work session first. We continually put things on the agenda that most of us know nothing about, and then we're, at last minute, we say, we have to vote on this tonight.
Councilwoman, this has been on the agenda for two weeks. This has been in the governing body's mailboxes for the past two weeks.
Why was it not on a work session?
Because?
Why was it not on a work session?
Because Wret just supported it as well.
But when I met with you, you told me that Wret had supported it.
Correct.
That was two weeks ago.
Correct. So it's on the agenda, take action on it.
You just said they approved it.
We need to approve the road closure by approving Bailey Ave. Either, your motion is to table it, and Councilwoman Yasni, who's a big integral part of organizing it with his neighbors, just knows there will be enough time to go to the effort. It's hours and hours to develop this event, work it. Any further discussion? Local.
Councilman Delgado?
To table it? No.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes, to table it.
So it's a no?
Yes.
So it's a no?
Yes.
So it's a no?
I'd like to.
Right.
Councilman Mark Markoff?
Yes.
I also have item 14H, review of best practices and corrective action plan submitted by the Chief Financial Officer. I'd like that to go on the work session also.
Second?
Hold on, hold on. Remember, this agenda was created for the 18th. Meeting was canceled on the 18th. This was put on the agenda with hopes to have the completed best practice detailed by this evening. Our CFO has resigned, which we'll be dealing with later. So this item has not even come from our CFO resign, number one. Number two, the deadline to submit this to the state is Friday. Mayor, if you don't submit this by Friday, you submit, you qualify for state funding like everybody else, but it's pretty much by process elimination. If you do not submit this by Friday, you're not going to receive any state funding. Correct.
Can you tell me where this is?
This has been on our CFO since he was hired five weeks ago.
Is it in this book?
No, it's not. We need to, okay, review of best practice and corrective action plan.
Yes.
The correction, the correction plan has been submitted for the past month to everyone on this governing body, okay? Those are corrective action plans from the 2011 order. Review the best practice. The review will simply us telling Ted tonight, find us a CFO to certify our best practice and get it out by Friday. Because our CFO, who was on payroll for five weeks, has not performed this and since resigned last week. Do you need to authorize? We need to just have a discussion on it. Authorize corrective action plans per our order on our CFO, and authorize Ted to get our best practice done. If you do not, we will lose state aid the calendar year 2013.
Take action. Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Anything else?
Yes, I have J, key J, acceptance of resignation from Chief Financial Officer. I'd like that to go to the executive session.
You're simply receiving your resignation?
I'd like to go to the executive session.
And then we'd have to come out and publicly to the action.
Perhaps.
You have a motion to move item J, I'm sorry.
14J.
14J to executive session. Would action to be taken after executive session, correct?
Possibly.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Any discussion on that? And local.
Councilwoman Shorten?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shorten?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yasni?
No.
Councilman Delgado?
Yes.
Councilman Delgado?
Yes.
Councilman Yaskel?
Yes.
Councilman Delgado?
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
The motion to open early public comment, so move. Delgado, Yasni, is that Shippen? Shippen, Yasni? Open, open, open early public. All in favor?
Yes.
Shippen, yes. Anyone wishing to come up to speak to an agenda item, please, you say your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Maureen Turner, 2111. I'm still addressing the issues on the pilot, so.
Sure, if I may, when we get to the pilot on the agenda, we'll open to public comment as part of the public hearing for that ordinance, so.
So go back to my seat.
Well, it's up to you, I haven't said save for that, right? It doesn't matter, but because that portion of the meeting will be recordably relevant to that ordinance, so if you're going to speak about the pilot, there'll be an opportunity to do that. Just right. Okay, thank you, Maureen. Anyone else? If you want to speak to the pilot, yeah, we will have public comment on that hearing. So you know it?
I just have a question.
Yeah, just got to go up, state your name and address for the record.
John Dorsey, South Hurley. So if an item has been removed from the agenda, are we not allowed to speak on that?
You can speak on any matter that you can, any matter you want as a matter of the public. Doesn't matter what's on the agenda. Well, I think by most state early public is agenda items, old late public is it, which I don't mind. But I would argue that it was on the agenda advertised to the public, so even though it was removed for the governing body to discuss, the public would have to write a speech or something that was on the agenda, because they received the agenda a week ago, especially for a special.
All right, I appreciate that, then. Being a member of the Recreation Commission and having sat at the meeting last night and discussed Bailey Ave, we were all in agreement that we would support it, and as John mentioned, we did not meet for the months of July and August. Last night was our first meeting as scheduled, so it was the earliest that we could get together to actually formally approve it. So it's disappointing to come here tonight and see that all of a sudden now it's probably not going to happen, and then there's really no reason given as to why it's not going to happen, except that by the recommendation of the Recreation Commission, we would like to move forward with it, and one council member feels that it's a work session issue. And I know that you have to understand that because of the work session being moved to the ninth, there's not enough time to do it, so it just seems, honestly, to me, it just seems like it's being done in spite. I don't understand, I mean, it's a simple, the Recreation Commission, we met, we agree that it's a good thing, it's a great thing for our town, we missed it last year, it's almost like a revisiting of the fireworks, and taking things away from what makes Bloomingdale such a great place to live. We all sat last night, we were excited about it, that it was going to happen, it was being brought back to Bloomingdale, the kids love it, and, you know, it's something that we can do, and it's being taken away from us, the carpet's being pulled out right from underneath us, and honestly, I sit here and I want to believe that there's a good reason, but I can't. I understand that there were other things that were moved, that I would agree that there were good reasons for those, but for the one thing that I wanted to see, it's not going to happen, and I'm so disappointed. And I understand that I can't get any reaction from anybody tonight, I get that, but I just want you to understand that there are people that are passionate about having good and fun things happening in our town, and they're not happening. What we're hearing is that our town can't, our town council can't even get together. You were elected by us to meet and to move on certain items, and you can't even do that. We couldn't even have a meeting two weeks ago because people couldn't make it. Because this, this is what you're supposed to do. There are things that need to happen, there are things that need to be moved on, and there are times, maybe you have to bend a little bit and say, okay, maybe this is a work session item, but you know what? It's a really great thing for Bloomingdale, it's for the kids, it's for, gosh, it's Halloween, come on. But it's being done out of spite, I think because of maybe where it's being held, or maybe because of who has always done it, but you know what? That same person who has always taken charge and has always spent a lot of time to do this specific event is also passionate about our town, so passionate that Ray decided to run for council. So why are we being penalized? I just don't get it, I really don't, and I hope that you guys are able to reconsider somehow tonight, I don't know if that's possible, but I really do, I hope that you're able to reconsider and understand that this is something that's good for Bloomingdale, and let's continue to keep the good things in Bloomingdale. That's all I have to say, I'm just really disappointed.
Yeah, I think it's an opportune time to, the clerk received today an email from Michael Nassetella, who was also part of this, from Bailey Ave, and he sent the letter asking to be read in the record with hopes to be passing, but, "To my fellow residents of Bloomingdale, I'm writing this letter to help you understand how important the closing off of Bailey Ave is. As a person directly involved in the closing, from its inception, I find the politics of the issue disgraceful. It is not a private party, as some people refer to it. I find this reference to be offensive and expect it to cease immediately. It was always and should always remain for the community. Back in 2000, my wife and I moved to Bloomingdale. We were excited to have bought a house on a street with families and children on it. Excited by the neighbor, the neighborhood, who all went out for the holidays, we could hardly wait. 'Oh yes,' said a neighbor, 'that's Freddie, he works on Broadway.' His house was decked out to the nines for Halloween. Our first Halloween, the families and children came and went, fun and exciting. Then I witnessed a small, rather lanky boy dressed up as a skeleton running on the side of the road with wonder and awe in his eyes, almost gets swiped by an angry driver, mad at the kids walking on the streets slowing down traffic, a moment in life I will never forget. The following year, similar event almost unfolded. A combination of mad drivers and excited children was a disaster waiting to happen. The following year, I asked the town and council to close the road. With little event, the road was closed and a success was born. Another year passed and the decorations grew. We worked tirelessly to build it better. Then we met our first opposition to the street closing. With every neighbor signing a petition, we fought to keep it open. Having won the fight for a simple reason, it was for the kids, not politics, just for the kids. The other neighbors decorated as people came from all over to check out our town's cool street. Parents happy their kids could run free without the fear of being run over. The kids happy to meet up with friends and have it daylight scared out of them. The almost carnival atmosphere brings a little peace to all when the day is over knowing we are all safe. Now the safe feeling is pulled away from under our feet for politics. People know to come to Bailey Ave to be safe. I ask all of our council to reconsider and keep the street closed for safety sake. Thank you. Michael Nassetella, 43, Bailey Ave, Bloomingdale, New Jersey." He just asked me to read that. Into the record. Is anyone else wishing to speak to the agenda item?
John, can I get a comment on Bailey Ave?
Yes.
From Mike's perspective, I live obviously across the street from Ray, and when Ray started this, my kid was a little bit of an older age. But people, when they started coming to Bailey, it started out small with Freddie, and things grew, it grew big. I have people in my house, I have no idea who the heck they were. But you get conversation with people you've never met before, you sure kids come up to the door, kids switching masks just to come back and do it again. It's really amazing. From my house, my wife makes chili in the back, people come over, we open our home to everybody, almost everybody in the street does the same thing. Mike does a little bit something smaller for the kids on his property, and I bet you we have thousand people, right? Come, and then when it's all done, the neighbors go out to clean up, we do everything, and the work that goes into that, it's not just the people on Bailey Ave, they helped build it, people from Macaton Road to Millers. Mr. Miller used to be part of it, be going inside and running the chainsaw or doing whatever. It's amazing, it's amazing, and you get to meet a lot of people from town that you've never met before. It's a great town, eventually.
Thank you, John. Yes?
Jennifer Offield, 17 Cedar Street, Bloomingdale, New Jersey. Miss Shorten, I'd ask that you kindly rescind tabling it. This is for the kids, and it's the one night in a year where I have been there, and I have helped Mike, and I've been with the neighbors, everybody has a good time, and it's neighbor meeting with neighbor, and the kids all gathering and having good, clean fun, just something that is lacking in this country, good, clean, honest fun. These kids need it, we as adults enjoy it, we get to check with our neighbors. I'd like you to, really reconsider, and let's move forward with it, because it is the kids. You was a schoolteacher, you know, it is the kids, and we've got to do it for them. You know, I do appreciate your comments, and I appreciate Mr. Dorsey's and everyone else's here. Unfortunately, sitting here isn't an easy thing to do. I've done it, I do not, you must know, but I have done this job for a year and a half. I think it must be a wonderful neighborhood party. I don't think it should be funded by the town. Originally, no one told me it was always funded by public events, and I was told this year it would be funded by the rec department. I did not realize it would have to be voted on, but having a vote, if I have a vote, I would vote no on it anyway, and I think the people involved should continue it on their own as a neighborhood event. I don't see it as a town event. I think it's probably great for kids. My own family participated in our neighborhood spook walks, and I understand what Halloween is and means. I don't think we can afford all these things, I truly don't, and I don't think that the liability of what could happen should be taken on by the town, and I do think it would have been helpful if before this came before us at the last minute, we had had a chance to sit and to talk about it, but I wouldn't support it if it was rescinded not to have it on the agenda, because time and time again, we simply ignore the fact that we have work sessions, and maybe time got away this time, I didn't realize that it was going to change funding, nobody told me that. Apparently, the, whatever the funding amount is, I don't know. I disagree with the private property, and I think like other neighborhoods, it should be a neighborhood activity, and let the people in the neighborhood do it. It still requires the council's permission to close the room, therefore, it is an issue. We've done that for other neighborhood parties this year. We lost it last year, we had it the year before. This is one small item that the kids look forward to, and especially at the start of the school year, where they're getting to know, the fellow students getting to know their new classmates. It is something that healthy, no kid can get hurt by a speeding car going down the road, and I've been on Mike's road, and John's road, and Ray's road, where there have been cars that fly down on a regular basis. There's, you know, God forbid a child gets hit. I just think that it's one small item that can be rescinded and brought back for the children. You can't keep taking from the children, and that's what it seems. I don't think we can take from the children, I truly don't. I feel, and I know a lot of people that I've spoken with, truly look forward to this. This is part of community, this is part of growing up, becoming friends, lifelong friends, and I really wish it would reconsider. You know, my children went to DeLasure Field for costume, for costume events, and many things go on on Halloween, and I just don't think the town should take the responsibility to. DeLasure Field is a municipal-owned piece of property. This is not, this, Bailey Avenue is a town that is owned by the road.
Councilwoman Shorten, your first statement was, this is a neighborhood event. It is not a neighborhood event, it's a town-wide Halloween event that draws.
It's on the town property.
That draws thousands, thousands of kids and adults. This requires weeks and hundreds of hours of construction for structures that cannot be done on public property. You cannot build a structure to sit there three weeks on DeLasure Field. You cannot build a structure to sit at BoPon four weeks upon weeks. It is the most conducive neighborhood for this type of event, number one. Number two, this event has always been paid for by public events end or all programs, depending on budget situation each and every year. Councilwoman, you and I had a meeting on September 6th, where we sat on the front park bench to talk about public events, and I clearly disclosed to you that I will be putting on the next agenda, and the problem is, we've had two cancellations till tonight. I will be putting on the agenda Bailey Ave for the approval for the governing body, and I clearly told you it will be coming out of all programs recreation. I had that discussion.
I had that discussion, I remember, it was not the same.
So tonight you sit here as though you, this is the first proceeding, that's very, very discouraging to me.
No, just because you have one memory of the meeting, I have another. I said, what about Nightmare on Bailey Ave, which you clearly posted early in the year on under public events.
Okay, so that's, I'm. You said it under public events, I could try to go a little green on the public events. It's a public account for the borough.
The only thing you told me was, the recreation will fund it, that's what you said. You never said it would be on the agenda.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, a member of the public.
Sure.
Way you asked, is there a sixth Bailey Ave? Have any of you ever been to Bailey Ave on Halloween?
I always thought it was a neighborhood event, I never knew it was public for the whole thing.
So let me just correct you on that, because you said it again tonight, it's a neighborhood party, which it's not, it's a public event funded through recreation. It's a recreation-funded public event. For the past seven years, before you sat up there, before any of you sat up there, it's been going on for years and years and years, and it was taken away, pulled away from children last year, and you guys did it again tonight. And I get your point about, you know, we should be discussing, discussion session, you have all these rules, and if we wait until October 9th, you're going to tell us that it's only a discussion tonight and it's not a vote, and you will delay it until the end of October for the vote, and then, like you said, you're going to vote it down anyway. So why not discuss it? Why not discuss it and vote on it?
It seems like we aren't.
Public comment?
I'm speaking as a member of the public tonight, I'm very disappointed, you don't understand what goes on. There is minimum 40 spikes, 13 spikes that are driven into the ground, okay? I donate my lot, I donate the electric I wanted, I donate my time, and there's a lot of friends and neighbors and members of this community, recreation members, that come and help out to build this thing. It takes over a month to build it. It takes another month to plan out what goes on in these rooms. It's a pretty neat event for the kids, and what goes on in my lot is not the only thing that goes on. There is a egg plant that goes on in another neighbor's lot, there are people walking the street, it is like a carnival type of event, it's a lot of fun for the children. And this year, we're going to open it up to the schools and the.
Well, you got conversations with people you've never met before. You saw kids come up to the door. Kids switching masks just to come back and do it again. It's really amazing. From my house, my wife makes chili in the back. People come over. We open our home to everybody. Almost everybody in the street does the same thing. Mike does a little bit, something smaller for the kids on his property. And I bet you we have a thousand people, right? Come. And then when it's all done, the neighbors go out to clean up. We do everything. And the work that goes into that, it's not just the people on Bailey Ave. They helped build it. People from Mcathupin Road to Millers. Mr. Miller used to be part of it. He'd be going inside and running the chainsaw or doing whatever. It's amazing. It's amazing. And you get to meet a lot of people from town that you've never met before. It's a great town event.
Thank you, John. Yes.
Jennifer Offield, Seventeen Cedar Street, Bloomingdale, New Jersey. Ms. Shortman, I'd ask that you kindly rescind table eight. This is for the kids. And it's the one night in a year where I have been there and I have helped Mike and I've been with the neighbors. Everybody has a good time. And it's neighbor meeting with neighbor. And the kids all gathering and having good, clean fun. Just something that is lacking in this country. Good, clean, honest fun. These kids need it. We as adults enjoy it. We get to check with our neighbors. I would like you to really reconsider and let's move forward with it because it is the kids. You as a schoolteacher, you know it is the kids. And we've got to do it for them. You know, I do appreciate your comments and I appreciate Mr. Dorsey's and everyone else who's here. Unfortunately, sitting here isn't an easy thing to do. I've done it. I do not, you must know, but I have done this job for a year and a half. I think it must be a wonderful neighborhood party. I don't think it should be funded by the town. Originally, no one told me it was always funded by public events. And I was told this year it would be funded by the rec department. I did not realize it would have to be voted on. But having a vote, if I have a vote, I would vote no on it anyway. And I think the people involved should continue it on their own as a neighborhood event. I don't see it as a town event. I think it's probably great for kids. My own family participated in our neighborhood spook walks and I understand what Halloween is and means. I don't think we can afford all these things. I truly don't. And I don't think that the liability of what could happen should be taken on by the town. And I do think it would have been helpful if before this came before us at the last minute, we had had a chance to sit and to talk about it. But I wouldn't support it if it was rescinded not to have it on the agenda because time and time again, we simply ignore the fact that we have work sessions. And maybe time got away this time. I didn't realize that it was going to change funding. Nobody told me that. Apparently, whatever the funding amount is, I don't know. I disagree with the private property and I think like other neighborhoods, it should be a neighborhood activity and let the people in the neighborhood do it. It still requires the council's permission to close the room. Therefore, it is an issue-
We've done that for other neighborhood parties this year.
We lost it last year. We had it the year before. This is one small item that the kids look forward to and especially at the start of the school year where they're getting to know, the fellow students getting to know their new classmates. It is something that healthy. No kid can get hurt by a speeding car going down the road. And I've been on Mike's road and John's road and Ray's road where there are helping cars that fly down on a regular basis. There's, you know, God forbid a child gets hit. I just think that it's one small item that can be rescinded and brought back for the children. You can't keep taking from the children. And that's what it seems.
I don't think we can take from the children. I truly don't.
I feel and I know a lot of people that I've spoken with truly look forward to this. This is part of community. This is part of growing up, becoming friends, lifelong friends. And I really wish it would reconsider.
You know, my children went to Delasia Field for costume, for costume events and many things go on on Halloween. And I just don't think the town should take the responsibility to-
Delasia Field is a municipal owned piece of property. This is not-
Bailey Avenue.
Bailey Avenue is a town that is owned by the road.
Councilwoman Shortman, your first statement was this is a neighborhood event. It is not a neighborhood event. It's a town-wide Halloween event that draws-
And it's on the town property.
That draws thousands, thousands of kids and adults. This requires weeks and hundreds of hours of construction for structures that cannot be done on public property. You cannot build a structure to sit there three weeks on Delasia Field. You cannot build a structure to sit at Boecon four weeks upon weeks. It is the most conducive neighborhood for this type of event, number one. Number two, this event has always been paid for by public events and/or all programs, depending on budget situation each and every year. Councilwoman, you and I had a meeting on September 6th where we sat on the front park bench to talk about public events. And I clearly disclosed to you that I will be putting on the next agenda. The problem is we've had two cancellations till tonight. I will be putting on the agenda Bailey Ave for the approval for the governing body. And I clearly told you it will be coming out of all programs recreation. Had that discussion. So tonight you sit here-
The discussion I remember was not the same.
So tonight you sit here as though you-
Oh, my God.
This is the first proceeding. That's very, very discouraging to me.
No, just because you have one memory of the meeting, I have another. I said, what about Nightmare on Bailey Ave, which you clearly posted early in the year under public events.
Okay, so that's- You said that are public events. I'm trying to look through another public event. It's a public account for the borough.
The only thing you told me was the recreation will fund it. That's what you said. You never said it would be on the agenda.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, a member of the public council.
Sure.
Where you asked, is that it's six Bailey Ave? Have any of you ever been to Bailey Ave on Halloween?
I always thought it was a neighborhood event. I never knew it was public for Halloween.
So let me just correct you on that because you said it again tonight. It's a neighborhood party, which it's not. It's a public event funded through recreation. It's a recreation-funded public event. For the past seven years, before you sat up there, before any of you sat up there, it's been going on for years and years and years. And it was taken away all the way for children last year. And you guys did it again tonight. And I get your point about, you know, we should be discussing in discussion session. You have all these rules. And if we wait until October 9th, you're going to tell us that it's only a discussion tonight and it's not a vote. And you will delay it until the end of October for the vote. And then, like you said, you're going to vote it down anyway. So why not discuss it? Why not discuss it and vote on it?
It seems like we aren't.
Public comment.
I'm speaking as a member of the public tonight. I'm very disappointed. You don't understand what goes on. There is minimum forty spikes, thirty-inch spikes that are driven into the ground. Okay? I donate my lot. I donate the electric that I wanted. I donate my time and there's a lot of friends and neighbors and members of this community, recreation members that come and help out to build this thing. It takes over a month to build it. It takes another month to plan out what goes on in these rooms. It's a pretty neat event for the kids. What goes on in my lot is not the only thing that goes on. There is a egg hunt that goes on in another neighbor's lot. There are people walking the street. It is like a carnival type of event. It's a lot of fun for the children. And this year, we're going to open it up to the schools and the seniors because there was seniors coming going, I want to go through it, but I'm not, I'm at the latest seven o'clock. I want to go through it earlier. So I actually took that into account when I was opening it up earlier this year. It's a recreation-funded event because these spikes, they're twenty dollars, thirty dollars apiece. And then there's four-by-fours that goes into it that gets screwed down. So this way, it's held down tight. Two-by, four, two-by-fours go across three levels of it. There's plastic on both sides. Why? Because October winds is not going to hold up just the tank. The tank is going to put up a tank. It's going to get wrecked apart. There's a roof that's put on it. There is a tarp on top of that roof. We buy five rolls of plastic, they're ninety dollars a roll. The tarp is four hundred of them. Okay? You go through a couple of these. There is screws and there is wood lap that's used. That's why recreation funds towards it. I still spend over twelve hundred dollars between costumes, between decorations. All of that is coming out of my pocket and everyone that's involved. So I'm not getting paid for it. It's not a party for me. It's a lot of work. Actually, you're giving me the whole month off. But you're taking it away from the children.
I also believe that's why we have a rec commission to organize, you know, we don't tell them they can't have gymnastics. We don't tell them they can't have basketball. This comes to us because we have to be involved in the road closure. And knowing it was such a hot issue last year, it's here to discuss on approving it, which was approved by our recreation commission. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seem no one in motion to close early public comment.
Some move.
Second.
All in fair.
Aye.
I have a report from the governing body.
I just have one. I understand the master gardeners are armed there with the Bloomingdale Carnet ban on the parking lot by the senior senator and they had a very successful turnout. And I believe it was last Saturday and it was a wonderful day.
Anything else, anyone?
I happened to be going to the recreation meeting last night and right next door to recreation, their storefront, they're building in there. I walked in there. It's going to be a sweet shop, so that goes as good as I want to share it. Yeah. Bloomingdale residence, a residency.
Is that your old bar school?
Yeah, this is a job on the customer job.
Anyone else have anything?
Well, one more thing, Mr. Mayor. And I just locked in these dates today, so just surprising you. Next Thursday, October 5th, I'm going to be holding first of two-
October.
October 4th, sorry.
Next Thursday's the sixth. I'm sorry, I got the wrong calendar, brother.
Next Thursday's the 4th.
Fourth.
October 4th, going to be holding one of the first, one of two public meetings open to all public. If you want to learn more about where your tax dollars go, since I was the budget chair, I've been having to sit, take you through it. It'll be an open discussion type of an event. I asked the mayor to be there to also field questions. Let me just go through, you know, where your tax dollars go, what the average tax bill is and, you know, how it breaks down for the different pieces. It's something that, when I was walking and asking for your votes, it was something that a lot of residents asked for. They don't understand where the tax dollars were spent. So this is one of two meetings I'm going to be hosting, starting next Thursday. Seven people.
Again, it'll not be an advertised meeting. We'll get it on our website, but we have a forum. We need to honestly have time, so we need forty-eight hours to do so. So I will be there, Ray. So two more members, one more member wishes to join.
I have another meeting.
Okay. So then we will have a forum. Okay. I have a mayor's report, but I'm going to hold that for a moment until we go through our professional and our administrator.
Do you have any force, sir? Your force, I don't know, may we complete? Yes, she said we completed the county tax board proceedings for all of the hearings. The reevaluation company and the assessor were present. They prepared comparable sales analysis for each deal. And there was a number of cases that were resolved by recommendations. There's a number of times where we asked the reevaluation company to go back out and re-measure some of the residents. Even the ones that didn't have attorneys did a better job sometimes than those who had attorneys. They were very informative and they understood, come in with comparable sales and to discuss things that happened to their property. So the process has been completed. And I just would say going into next year, now's the time between now and the end of the year. If you do have a question or there's a concern about something that came up in the process or the property record, now would be the time to make a point to the assessor because the tax assessor cannot change the records after it's been worked first. He can at least look at any things that, you know, issues and concerns that are raised between now and the end of the year. So the law process has concluded. Last week was the last day of that rumor of recording the state county board taxation. And that's my important question.
Mr. Administrator, do you have any force?
Yes, sir. I went through my to-do list to update the mayor council. Well, with Lake Walk sidewalk improvement, actually started today. I'd say I had it pre-dated from ready for the last meeting, but it was canceled. The Walter T. Bergen lake issue, none of the holes are complete. There's five issues for five hours because of the lot. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the contractor and myself, Paul Dombrowski, to resolve this. We're moving forward with the farthest issue for construction funds and how we're going to proceed with that. The DPW monitoring wells, we're going to declare an emergency because there's no pending or open ordinance that we can charge that ninety-two hundred dollar fee. The playground that we moved from Soul Park to Walter T. Bergen School is pending. The contractor acknowledges that he will move it. As soon as he gets a day, he will put it in. Last Wednesday, I met with the Trail Grant Super Tent Ranger.
Our Trail Grant? Two thousand and when?
Two thousand and two was applied for and was issued two thousand and four. For the record, I didn't stop right there.
No, until two thousand and six.
Predated by a service. It's one to the state ranger. There was one issue that people want to read a check on. You can sign off and we're going to submit it next week. The Union Avenue sewer that affects the Delia and Machine Shop, Mr. Dombrowski has offered a remedy for those folks which would not include Union Avenue. And they've been given some tasks to perform and then they will meet back with Mr. Dombrowski. That's been done.
Would you be an assessment project?
I'm working diligently with our property maintenance issues and Mr. Tyson's working towards the zero tolerance resolution. Does get a little stifled at times because we wanted to court. We postponed these pending issues and some of our pending problems continue to be troublesome for some because we have, I don't want to use the word frequent flyer, but these people just don't seem to get out of that realm to move forward. But we will work through the process. The recycling center, I am in contact, I'm sorry, I'm in contact with the New Jersey DDP. Still pending a letter. Actually had communications with Cindy Randazzo today. She assured me that I will be getting my letter soon. The zoning change needed for the suggestion that Mr. Hanker put together for commercial growth for the business area needs to be changed. Obviously, Simmer Town, Deadville basically removed the requirement under the plan where they require so many parking spots. So basically, it was public parking, Bitbit Park at large. And he's going to research that ordinance and so we can devise a similar one. Hopefully, it would stimulate growth of our little businesses along Main Street that don't have enough appropriate parking on their own lot sites. I did check with Sandy. We're up to date with all the issues and funding that we would should receive back from FEMA. Our Walter T. Bergen restrooms, matter of fact, I just opened up an email today with a pending approval of our bathrooms. There's one issue that I need to go back to and make one correction. The Volpe land sale will be pending. I've asked the chief of police to assist me in researching the red light camera issue for residents. Red light cameras are installed at intersections for people that obviously basically make right turns on red lights without stopping. They do generate a sizable income for communities. And because our light is located at Union and Main, it's the responsibility of the borough. We just have a repair bill that's on the list tonight that's going to be repaired. A lot of these lights used to use a loop system. There was wires and you'd roll over on the light. You see guys three o'clock in the morning, back up and hit it again to trip the meter. That doesn't be used anymore because now the Roxel has rotted out those wire loops in there. So now they go to a camera. The camera's used to trip the light, not to photograph human race or anything. And that's a completely different function. But the camera systems are expensive. So the borough at some point in time is going to be in the hump. So we're hoping to look at a red light camera, which would be offsetting our maintenance costs to maintain our traffic. I'm in discussion with fleet maintenance with two communities neighboring for us to provide fleet maintenance for the police cars and general service to their vehicles. The cooperative paving with Tilcon, Mr. Fitzpatrick has finished Greenland Avenue and he's upgraded the connects on the other-
Jeffrey's Raffin.
The Union Ave paving, there was communications today that-
Pre-construction meeting Friday.
Right. That we're supposed to get the paving performed by the county on Union Avenue and to move forward on their promised projects on the county roads that are inside the borough. The issue of the-
Well, so there's no confusion. In April, we were told Mcathupin, most of Glenwell, that were sparked by a park by crane up to Glenwell's entrances, past the school, the end of the court and Union up until Avalon Bay are going to be done this year in the summer. And then we received notice that most likely Mcathupin, Glenwell will be put off to the spring of thirteen. We're hoping to get at least Union done before the winter. But there's a meeting Friday, so hopefully we can lobby any work done.
And one of the conditions that caused that delay is that the local contractor apparently was successful in all of those roads. So it's one contractor that's been out of the back end of the schedule and work broke out. So one person was able to bid on all of them, but they have the limited size of how much work they can get performed. We have the Raffkin Road, which Dombrowski's filed for state rent funding. Obviously, we have to decide and dissect how much of that because we're never going to be funded enough to do by his proposals. But the general consensus is that we would start towards the school and work back-
Less road.
Towards the school, which would improve curb sidewalks because we're concerned with children walking to the school. The tank, the tank painting process is about to commence. They moved the equipment in to do so. We had to make a repair and a twelve-inch valve that we couldn't shut off. But that valve had been there for sixty years and the tank was erected in the sixties. So you can't completely get sixty years out of it. So, but that process actually should start next week. I have submitted and received from our department heads. I'd have to double-check the list and make sure that I don't have any strikers put, the job description list. And I'm forwarding all of those to Mr. D'Amato and Mrs. Shortman for their review. And that will be my report.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Can I ask you a question on that? That was something that's not on the report. About two months ago, we passed an ordinance to do a transparency, to put on the web. Do you have any input on the updating of that?
Well, we have a few conditions. Because we've hired a new web company, we sent, I refer to them as the technical teams, Terry and Jane, who are class, and they're going to be doing the updates. But I think we're going to be a bit here because there's some training and some conditions there. It hasn't been forgotten. We just have not been able to, Sherry's been short-staffed because we just got a C of O and now he's left. We have a new webmaster and our own employees are going to be doing this. So I, to be honest with you, I don't know when that will be accomplished, but that's in the works.
Well, the new website-
Is the information.
Pretty mild.
The information that's not going to profit is its own share.
Well, no, the information was posted itself.
Right.
That's always been piled in our salt. So we're just going to-
Was it traced when that happened?
The other thing I want to keep on the front burner is while we're putting the lights up, we had discussed making sure that the, whatever the computer is in place will let us know who's using the electric when. So I just want to be sure that that is part of the installation or whatever it needs to be, uninstalling the lights.
Okay. Thank you.
Ted, one question. A while back, on the jetting of the storm drains on Main Street, last week, and heavy rains that drove by, and those two, I don't know if the county ever came to jet those, but they're clogged.
What has happened is, and the mayor brought it up, and I don't know if that was clear to everybody, there was a large drain that was available under the CB BG drain, Community Block Rain. I applied on behalf of the borough for the replacement of those pipes in the drainage because the county acknowledged that those pipes were clogged and broken.
Okay, he did go on the other side.
So now their engineer, because technically, really isn't a blue moon of objects, but the county's projects is doing it. But they identified the money for Bloomingdale. Their county engineer designed a plan and they submitted it on behalf of the borough. So as soon as that project becomes funded, say Terry's going to come out, come all out open and replace all of that. And hopefully, it'll be good.
Yeah, I just drove by and I seen him welling out my own money.
We'll work on it.
Yeah. The two down for the post office.
That's the work. Okay. I have a mayor's report, which you can provide me to go down below and Ray, ask me to join me on the PowerPoint for me. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ted.
You're welcome, sir.
Jesus, phone is a three-dollar bill. Let me tell you.
What I'd like to do at this time in the mayor's report is just, what were some basic facts that are just that facts in our borough? Tonight, the governing body is probably going to be voting on the most important thing that the borough has had to decide in its history, and that is the pilot. The borough is also going to be voting on authorizing our administrator tonight to seek formal proposals to do further redevelopment on Main Street and the corridor of Union Avenue. There was an editorial written in Sunday's newspaper by a former councilperson, Ms. Linda Hump, that my concern is the misinformation that was purported in this editorial could one, influence some of the public opinion on the issues of the redevelopment, on the issues of our debt situation, and more importantly, possibly influence or affect how any of our governing body members may vote on the pilot. So I believe it's very important that we clarify with facts these issues. And if I, which I was personally attacked in a public forum, I will reply to a letter to the editor, but I'm going to handle that in a public forum as I'm going to do at this time. The first statement in the editorial was that in 2005, Bloomingdale had a visioning study prepared for Main Street. And as part of the Main Street visioning plan, Main Street was to declare an area in need of- in need of redevelopment. In 2005, the borough partnered with the county. County had some extra planning money, an offer to various communities, an opportunity to get involved, and we did in 2005, and a beautiful vision plan was put together for the borough of Bloomingdale. And it talked about what we could do to our corridor, what we could do to our Main Street, and it's quite an impressive document. Now, in the editorial, the former councilwoman stated that, she asked me, the mayor, who was on the governing body at the time, why was that never done? And what's alarming to me about that is the following resolution. The 2005 vision plan was proposed to the town, but it was not voted on, Ray, if you could scroll back down. And I just really need the governing body particularly to take real close attention to all these details. The resolution endorsing the A Street visioning study for the borough of Bloomingdale, Resolution 2006 6.3, where the governing body of borough of Bloomingdale finds and declares an existing strong mutual benefit partnership with the borough of St. County, respects the land policy-making partnership and evidence to joint ventures to promote over space recreation, monetization, downtown, and redevelopment. While the governing body further declares the borough acting through its citizens participating in three workshops, November 5th, January 6th, which result in the achievement of the consensus revitalization, redevelopment of boroughs, Main Street, Central is the consensus. The issue is, is going to the vote. In 2006, I was not on the governing body. In 2006, Councilwoman Huntley voted present, which is a no vote, on the redevelopment of Main Street. So to put in a public newspaper asking me today, why didn't the plan in 2005 come to fruition, I wasn't here. I wasn't here. The governing body passed this.
But she was.
Councilwoman voted no to it. The reason this did not go any further, the county stopped its funding source. Statement was made that I replied that it will never happen on Main Street. I'm not sure what we're referring to there. Other day, in a private conversation last year, I had a councilwoman on the vision plan, which is an intense, wonderful thing, is that this could never be done with public money. It'll never be done with public money. We need private money to instill this visioning plan. And that is exactly why we're here today, talking about a pilot, talking about redevelopment on Union, and talking about redevelopment on Main Street. Because we need the private sector, desirable private sector, to come to our town to make this vision plan come true. The mayor will stay publicly. It will never happen with public money. Absolutely not. We need private money to do this. And here we are today, tonight, voting on exactly that first step. Early more voting on the second step, which is getting proposals for the rest of the corridor as well as Union Act. The other part, which is concerning from a public perception, and from a perception this governing body truly needs, truly pay attention and understand, is the mayor's now telling everyone he's going to save Bloomingdale. Save us from who? He's going to save us from the people who put us in this place in the first place. The last 10 years, the mayor and my cohorts, whoever they may be, had bonded frivolously. Let's look at the history of debt in Bloomingdale. Let's start with our financial debt statements, which would be at the bottom of that attachment. And at some point, this is why I'm doing this, is to debunk any misinformation that can absolutely influence a councilperson's vote and a public perception on the pilot, the future development of our borough. It was in the attachment with all of, that was the symbol of debt. Summation of debt accumulation. Now go all the way to the debt statement, it should go on the bottom. Okay. Go to the top so we can see the years. 1988. Go to the bottom of 1988. This is an annual debt statement from our auditing books, our auditor's statement. The borough had debt of 3.291336, okay? Go to 1999. And I don't even want to talk about Democrats and Republicans, but this letter, this editorial has forced me to do that because I'm being blamed as a Democratic mayor and my cohorts of putting us in, spending frivolously, which is the reason some are thinking we're pushing the pilot to pay down our debt. Well, there's truth to that. We are pushing the pilot to pay down our debt, but not the debt that one party, one person incurred, and that is the most important part. I don't want to go D's and R's, but for this presentation, I must debunk the statements made in the paper. 1999, after 10 years of Republican control, 1992, seven and a half years of Republican control, debt went from the 3.2 in 88 to 5.2 million in 1999. So for those 10 years, the Republican majority bonded 1.9, 1,990,754 dollars. Now go, if you would please, to 2010. 2010, after 10 years of Democrat control, our debt went from 5,000, I mean, sorry, 5 million to, what was the last number? 5,200,000, okay? To 9,610,000. So under Democrat control, for those 10 years, the Democrats bonded, put debt on, 3.778741, 3.7 million. So 10 years from 99, excuse me, 88 to 99, the Republicans put on 2 million. The next 10 years, Democrats put on 3.7 million. Now, the Republicans who had control, that's about when I first moved into town, primarily that debt, they paved a lot of roads. That's good. It's a good thing for Bloomingdale. They paved a lot of roads. I think, I think they bought a fire truck. The 10 years to bring us the 3.7 million dollar debt, a lot happened in that 10 years. We built a firehouse. We built a new Department of Public Works building. We put an elevator, made this building ADA compliant. We built a ladder, we bought a ladder truck. We updated the DPW fleet. We bought a garbage truck. Again, paved roads. The items it takes a borough to do. You cannot pay cash for a fire truck. You cannot pay cash to pave a million dollars' worth of roads. Every governing body in the history of the borough, whether you're a Democrat or Republican, has bonded. So, we went to 2010, and now our bond, our debt was at 9 million. In one year, under Republican new control, last year, our debt went to 11,18630 dollars. So that means in one year, one year, and I'm going to count through to September 2012, we had added 2.5 million dollars' worth of debt under Republican control. And I'm not going to beat up the Republicans for it because 1.7 of that was flood mitigation. A lot of that is road paved. That's what's yet to occur this year. Ray, go back. So if you do an analysis over a 21-year period, 1990 to 99, Republican control, debt was 1.9 million. From 2011 to today, Republican control, added debt was 2.5. So total debt, 4.697 under Republican control. Go to Democrat control. Democrat control for 10 years, 3.778741, okay? The point is, everyone bonded. That's how you run a borough. That's how you buy the fire truck, build a DPW building, make ADA compliance. That's how you do it. So don't dare put in a public forum that the mayor and his cohorts put us in this condition, therefore now pushing the pilot. The only truth about that is the mayor is pushing the pilot to get us out of this condition. The reason this condition exists, both parties are to blame. Both parties are to blame. The reason the debt is what it is today is because we have not had the revenue to pay it down. We have not had the revenue to allow us to borrow less. The pilot is going to get us to that point, to help pay this down. That was proven at our public hearing when the presentation was given. This is what didn't exist for the last, the history of Bloomingdale. So it's not a Republican thing, it's not a Democrat thing. Every governing body bonds, and the 10-year period is pretty close. Actually, Republicans bonded 919,000 more than the Democrats. But again, it shouldn't be a DNR thing. We're a small town, it should be about what's best for Bloomingdale. And it's just, there's so much anger and sour grapes that we're not going forward. I have a plan. Ray and I are presenting a plan. I don't know what plan has ever been suggested in 30 years of Bloomingdale to stop this problem. And this plan's going to fix it. Now, that same former councilperson to say that mean old mayor and his cohorts bonded frivolously, now they want to pay it off with the pilot. I've just proven to you, these are out of our financial audited statements, that it was a mutual thing. Both parties, every governing body, for the history of the borough, has done the same thing. I might be going to get into who got more bang for their buck, but under the 10-year control, 3.7 million for the Democrats were being, look at the return. DPW, floor building for a police station, firehouse, fire truck.
I don't know enough.
What was done. Now, the interesting point is, for a person to publicly land-based me that it's my fault and my cohorts, Ray, I need you to go to the bonding history of 2006 through 2011. Yes. Yeah. I don't want to pick at anyone. I don't want to read on the forum that I'm the mean mayor picking on Linda Huntley. But when you're going to beat me up publicly and tell me it's all my fault, my Democrat cohorts, then I'm going to point out your voting record on debt in the borough. Our councilwoman Huntley served on this borough from 2006, 7, 8, 9, Ray, can you come up? 10, 11. She voted yes on 12.7 million dollars' worth of debt. That is indisputable, that is fact, that is in every single bond origins that was voted on in the borough of Bloomingdale. If you could scroll down to the backup on that, I'm not going to go through everyone. Anyone can vote for this. You're more than welcome to. My point of pointing it out is it's not Linda Shortman's fault. It's not, definitely not your two, you're new here. It's not your fault, it's not your fault, it's not my fault. Everyone supported these things. Okay. 2.6 million for a library civic center. Everyone voted yes. Huntley, Brew, Booshers, Seescher, Smith, all voted yes. Now obviously, when you total that up and go slow here, you have 12 million dollar in debt over a six-year period. And not all of that is our debt. A lot of that's canceled, like that one eventually was canceled because the library never happened, so they canceled that debt. A lot of it's offset by grant money, but the point is, over the six years, the 10 years the Democrat incurred 3.7 million in debt, councilwoman Linda Huntley, who blames me for all of it, was there six of those 10 years and voted on 12 million of it. Keep going, please. 36, 2006, 3.3 million dollars. And you'll see, to be included, 200 expected to get back from feds, 400 expected to get back from DOT. Let's go up. The point is, voted Brew, Huntley, Hornman, Booshers, Seescher, all yes. Again, I'll go through all of them to total 12 million dollars in debt. I'm not picking on you, Linda. The point is, you voted on debt too. I voted on debt when I was there. That's how the borough operates. The problem is, the analysis has proven, the D's and R's have done it both. They've done it the same. Here we are today, our debt is such because we haven't had the revenue to offset that spending. And again, this is spending unnecessary items. Firehouse, fire trucks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I get excited about it, so when I read an editorial that is blaming the mayor single-handedly in my 10 years of involvement, for all this debt, the 12 million dollars in debt we have, when everybody, councils, Republicans and D's from 1988 to today have all created this debt equally, equally. And councilwoman Huntley, who's the most vocal about this so-called frivolous spending, was part of 12 million of it. So how dare you say to anyone other than everybody and make it a DNR thing? That is so wrong. It's not a DNR thing. Governing bodies in the borough-
Excuse me, mayor. I don't think this is right.
Of course you don't. I'm in my-
Excuse me, mayor. Excuse me, I want to finish. I don't think this is right, but you're responding to a letter with the editorial in the paper, and I don't think this is right. This is a town hall meeting. This is not your debate on Linda's Huntley article in the paper. I don't think it's right.
Thank you for your comments. Again, I've proven the debt-
You're wasting our precious time. This is not-
My point is, I'm not blaming you-
You should put a letter in the paper about it.
I will, I will, I will. Thank you.
Can you please?
Questions asked, whether or not it's appropriate, and each member of the governing body has the right to have a report to state what they want pertaining to matters with respect to the borough. So if you're asking me, if permissible it is, everyone has that discretion, just as each member of the governing body has the right to comment as well.
Yeah, this is what we have to separate, being mad at me. I'm not picking on you.
I think this is wrong.
Okay, you're entitled.
It's wrong. If you have a response to a letter in the press, please do it that way.
Let me ask you this.
We have borough business to do.
And we're against that.
Then let's get to business.
And I'm protesting the borough business by the-
This is something about the paper. Let's stop, please, mayor. Let's go on. We have all these items on the agenda.
Because you're not having me in-
You're responding to a letter in the paper. Please stop. Let's go back to business.
Can I have the floor now? I have to go to the chapter. I'm responding to a letter in a public newspaper-
I'm going home. I hope everybody else comes home with me because this is ridiculous.
You're both to blame. Wrong. I'm responding to a letter in a public newspaper that states- A public newspaper that- Let me ask you this. Is it multiplying for the visioning plan that did not occur?
John, this is not the time. We have business to attend. This is not your time to respond to a letter in the press.
It's exactly-
Please, let's get back to business.
Do you believe what was written?
Mayor, I don't want to-
I just ask you a question, yes or no? Do you believe what was written?
I'm not answering you.
See, that's my concern. A person who believes this or being influenced against the right decisions to be made here. I've proven the debt, it exists, both parties created it, not John Delaney, not the Democrats, both parties. Former councilwoman Huntley was part of that. So, you know, to say you weren't and everyone else was, is a big problem. That's all I'm saying. Because now, in front of us, tonight, we have the answer for the first time in 30 years in the borough of Bloomingdale. We have the answer. It's a pilot that's going to bring us the revenue to bring down this debt. Now, governing bodies, you have any comments on what you just made about my report?
Come on. Let's please go on.
Anybody have any comments?
Selena, can I just add to?
Sure.
You know, what mayor said is, the initial revenue that the pilots are going to bring us-
Really, be quiet so we can hear?
The initial revenue that the pilot's going to bring us, if it's used to pay down debt, it's used collectively to stabilize your taxes, it's a benefit for all of us. And what I'm about to show you is a spreadsheet, and this was, a member of the public came up, Lenny Gell came up at the last meeting when we were going through the pilot program and the benefits of it, and I had in there that this benefit will compound as a result of the fact that we're going to pay down debt because we pay interest on that debt, right? So the benefit is bigger than just the actual dollars because you're paying down your interest cost faster, so it will actually compound a lot faster. So I just wanted to, you know, and Lenny asked, well, how many years before I see a benefit? And I get what he's asking, he's saying, hey, you're going to tax me the same dollars for the next 15, 20 years before I see a benefit, or am I going to get some of it right away? So I put this spreadsheet together for the governing body to examine and see the options that are available to us to prepare the pilot here. We can do that.
Okay. So Ray's going to hold the spreadsheet, we're getting the pilot, to do that before we open the public comment. Again, you know, I know I've set some of you there, and, you know, again, I had to speak what was on my chest. It's not about D's and R's, it's about Bloomingdale. So I'm not blaming someone because I've proven it was every governing body for 30 years issues. And we have an answer here to stop believing in Bloomingdale.
And the only other comment I have to make, you know, Mr. Mayor, you said, we have to borrow to pay for stuff. Well, if we had the cash, we wouldn't have to borrow. And this gives us the cash that we need in order not to keep on borrowing. And you will see it, I will show you how we're going to get there.
Mr. Mayor, my time-
Mr. Mayor, my timing is extremely inappropriate.
I'm sorry?
My timing is not appropriate, but can I make a comment on something that happens previously?
No problem.
I would like, I listened to Mr. Darcy speak, and I didn't say anything at the time, and I feel I really, as I thought of it, I should've said something. I know how passionate you are, I understand your work with kids, I'm very well aware of it, and I know where you're coming from. My decision has nothing to do with being spiteful, or mean, or getting back at anyone. My decision on the Halloween event is strictly from the points that I made, as far as I don't believe it should be on the private street, and I don't believe that we should spend the money. But I just wanna clarify to you that, yes, my career also was spent with children, and I have never done anything out of spite or in a revengeful way, and I just wanted to make that clear before we go on.
I have eleven department reports, all copied, on the health probably made this board of departments. If you have any questions on there, it was a pretty good public commentary. Consent agenda, on there is the meeting from August 8th, August 14th, September 4th, a special meeting for pilot on 6th. Also on the consent agenda is proclamation received from Governor Kristi Noem, 9/11, and a request from the Environmental Federation to protect their annual canvassing campaign of motion for the consent agenda, please. So, there. Any business? It was shipment and demo, I believe. And all there. Any business, especially regards to proposals from Borough Auditor for Lo Sap and Sewer and Water Board. Received proposals for the audit of our Lo Sap and the study on the merger utility at our last meeting. Councilwoman Shortman wanted a certification of funds. Our CFO before his resignation did not certify the funds. Funds cannot be certified based on the recommendation and the decisions of the Treasurer, so that money is not currently available. Do you have any comments on that, or should we do it? Status of the playground being moved to Walter T. Burgen, as Ted had said, we got approval from the county to legalize existing grant money to move that playground from Sloan to Burgen School. Trophy will be done in the next seven to 10 days, Monday, back to the meeting, hopefully within a week. Status of Trill Grant Hill covered, I need adoption of resolution 2012 9.2, payment to our formacy of over interim services. Our former, formerly former, has not been paid, so I need that motion.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the budget was for that position and what the payment would be.
The governing body offered you a key until you got the new one, so it's all in your books, Ted, she just speaks.
I don't recall the exact amount.
The governing body originally pointed it through, and then you didn't have to see a vote until getting lost. So she disperated time at the rate that was approved by the governing body, so she just hasn't been paid since then. And, you know, obviously within the budget. Certified funds, you have the resolution. Race room by the governing body was $50 an hour. Steve Original guys, March 6, 2012, we authorized payment at $50 rate, and that was voted on by a 4-2 vote, with a no vote from Petuushion Shortman on retaining CFO, so we had a new one.
But we're voting to pay her an amount of money that we don't know what it is? I know it's $50 an hour, but how...
Her salary rate was still in the budget. It never...
Oh, gee, thanks.
So it's, it's, we're paying, it's in the budget.
How much was the dollar on that? $50 an hour. Available now? How many hours did she work? Bottom line.
I don't have that covered in front of me.
We're paying her for the time she worked, no more and no less. We just reading that.
Did she work 100 hours, or did she work 1,000?
It doesn't matter, you gotta pay her.
Paying her for the time she worked.
Yes, I heard.
Whether it is 1,000 or 100, we're paying her for the time you hired her to work. Chairman Payson's...
Hey. Here, it says, here's a letter to Fred, says Cherry needs some advice on that. Hey, Donna, she filled in and told him was hired approximately two months, but we only authorized up to $10,000. It said she would fill in until he was hired, but we don't have a formal resolution on it. Cherry needs some other...
So we're authorizing that payment for the extended hours, because you guys authorized her estate, so you had hired her.
We had authorized it.
Right, we're gonna have to, we table that, tonight's we gotta hire a new one. So does the motion on table, any further discussion about you paying her for her time? I need a roll call, please.
Well, I, before you go, I thought you could not vote yes on this unless I know I have money for that.
But it's for her available time, so whatever it is, I do, really should be.
Sure like a number.
I will get a bill from her for the amount of hours she worked, the rate she spent or the establishment. Roll call.
Councilman Shippin?
No.
Councilman Shortman?
No.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Connelly?
No.
Councilman Dela?
Yes.
Councilwoman Petuush?
No. So they're not gonna pay the woman who did the job. It's awful.
Okay, second and final read.
Can we go back to 13 Act Discussion Board, Borough Order?
Sure.
Put this letter in here from, from Len Nicolosi, certification of funds on September 14th. It says right here, the vote will be both, the vote will be charged against professional fees line of utility charges. As the director of writing, there remain $19,000 billed within the year, can be certified. You said it's not gonna be certified.
Okay, well, we don't have the September 17th memo from the same individual, Len Nicolosi, saving his resignation. Please be advised that I revisit the certification of funds based on the spreadsheet compared by the Treasurer concerning significant unencumbered bills and contractual liabilities that will affect the budget for the remaining part of the year. Please note the Treasurer should recover these liabilities against the top of lines and once done, the ability to certify will change. I hereby withdraw my certification and recommend that all such liabilities be entered the reporting system. So, it was tracked on 9/17. Same day he resigned. Item G, second and final read in public hearing ordinance, 15, 2012, venue chapter 10, for our code in solar panels. Can I have a public notice statement, please? Right, the motion.
Oh.
So moved. All there? Just read the title of that off.
Morning's torment, code for Bloomingdale establishing community cap chapter 10, turn in with energy.
Okay, a motion open public here.
Second.
All favor. And just so the public know, this is an ordinance we introduced, we're adopting to, we don't, we never had on our books any regulations for solar panels or turbines. So, at the recommendation of our code, the Anheuser, our code enforcement officer, we are tailoring Camelons and Bufflers ordinance, which just puts rules and regs in where they can sit in front of the house, and it does prohibit turbine on residential level. So if anyone has to speak to that, roll up the public comment, I was here. See no one, motion closed.
So moved.
All there? I have any motion to adopt?
So moved.
And roll call. Just do a doubt.
Councilman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Connelly?
Yes.
Councilman Dela?
Yes.
Councilwoman Petuush?
Yes.
Councilman Shippin?
Yes. Thank you. Next slide, second and final reading of public hearing for ordinance 16, 2012, accepting and approving an application by Bloomingdale Urban Renewal LLC, formerly known as Avalon Bay Communities, for financial agreement for Bloomingdale. Public hearing was held on September 6th, but I will allow another public comment. Technically, it was done, you can move to adopt, but we can say we will have public comment. So I need a motion to open public comment on the ordinance 16, 2012.
Man, before we go to the public comments, would you like to present...
I would, I'd appreciate that. So let me, I can still get the motion another way, you go with that.
Sure.
So I have a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, thank you. And before we begin, I'd ask Councilman Yasi, would you present what you started presenting earlier?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, you know, we presented the pilot, okay, how much extra dollars it's gonna bring in compared to normal taxation, okay? It's about an extra 340,000 dollars in there. And, you know, Lenny Dell came up and asked, okay, if you apply this to debt the way you're planning on doing that, how many years before I see a benefit? Right? And there was many ways of applying that. You can apply 100% to debt, you can apply some of it to stabilize taxes for the first two, three years, and the rest of it to, you know, pay down your debt. So what you're gonna see here is, I prepared this, so governing bodies more comfortable, and I know Ms. Shortman, you had a concern around the little session saying, minimum 50% goes to pay down debt, and then in discussions, it was more around all the dollars paying down debt, so there's some confusion here. So hopefully this will clarify it. So paying down our debt, okay, our debt is approximately 12 million dollars, so let's just use round numbers. And let's just assume that our interest rate is around 3%, I don't have the exact percentage difference, okay? It would take, at the dollar amount that's in our budget today, it would take 11 years at 1.26 million dollars a year to pay down what we currently have as debt. And if we didn't borrow a single dime, yeah, it would take 11, 11 years, right? So that's, just keep that in mind. In our budget, we have 1.2 million dollars that we're paying today, and it would take 11 years. The pilot brings us 436,000 dollars if we go through pilot in comparison to 100,000 or just under 100,000, if we go normal taxation. And if we apply 50% of that money, okay, and there's gonna be new debt, okay, let's not kid ourselves, we're gonna need to fix up roads, we're gonna need to fix up pipes, and we're gonna need to buy new firetrucks and police cars, and there's gonna be new debt taken, okay? So this number, I can put in any number, if we take out an extra 500,000 dollars in a year, okay, and every year it's there. The pilot money, if we apply 50% of it, okay, to reduce our new debt, so we're not taking on more debt, so the 1.2, that's in our budget, is paying down the current debt, and this pilot, half of it going to pay down our new debt that we take. Our debt each year will grow, okay, 280,000 will go to 560, over a course of same 11 years, it would be 3 million dollars. So we paid off the 12 with the current budget, and we have new 3 million dollars if we apply only 50% of it. And what are we doing with the other 50%? Freezing taxes, stabilizing your taxes, okay? If we can do that, the other 2.9 million, because we're paying 1.26 million a year in our budget today, it would take another two years to pay that off. So in 13 years, we're out of our debt, we can save you money starting in year 2014. So it's really important to understand this. I mean, if we came in and said, you know what, we're gonna put 100% of it, 100% of this money to pay down our debt as fast as possible, right? Okay, after 12, after 11 years, debt's gone, right? We got 200,000 left, we got 1.2 million in budget to pay that, 200,000. We could do it that way, but now your taxes are going up every single year, right? For some of us, we prefer to see some balance there, right? These are taxes a little bit, pay down the debt at the same time, and if we can get rid of this debt, and then, you know, there are members of the public that are really concerned, why 30 years? And I made the statement, if I could do 40 years, I would do 40 years. You know why? Because it's an extra money that we would otherwise not get. 436,000 compared to 100,000, no brainer. Bring it in, pay down your debt, freeze taxes, stabilize taxes. There is no, this is it, this is the plan, okay? Everything that the mayor said, everyone, Democrats, Republicans, who cares? Okay, let's do the right thing for our town now. It's here, it's available for us, let's make the decision to move the status forward. So I just wanted to make sure I share this with you, and the fact that, you know, whether we pay 100% to pay down debt, or we pay 50% of it, it's still a good thing. I mean, look, if we had to borrow a million dollars a year, okay? Yeah, after, after 11 years, we have a new 5.8 million dollars worth of debt, but it would take three years to pay that off. So if you're not done in 11 years, you're done in 14 years. And after the 14th year, now you got that 1.2 million dollars that's in the budget to pay down debt today, available to give back to the community more and more and more, more in better our services. So this is it, there's a plan here, and because of this, yes, Avalon Bay will see a benefit. And because of that, there are other, other companies knocking on our door. We say no to this, all those calls are going away, okay? Bloomingdale will stay, the same old Bloomingdale, not going anywhere. We need to move this, we need to get Bloomingdale on top of the charts, not on the bottom.
And under normal taxation, we know that will be cheaper.
Under normal taxation, like I was saying, let me put it in here, let's just say it's 100,000 dollars a year, and it's gonna grow, you know, 2% a year, okay? You pay off 12 million, you still got 10 million to go, same 11 years. You're just never gonna get out of your own way. Just not gonna happen. And that's applying the 400% of the 100,000 to pay down debt, if I applied 50% of it, it would take another nine years to pay it off. It's just common sense, this is just common sense. And immediately after the vote for the pilot, I will personally make the motion that 100% of this will go to tax relief. Minimum 50% for debt reduction, and the rest of it to stabilize taxes. 100% to tax relief. And we'll make that move. So four new ordinance to be put in place.
You need to read my tab, actually, that's a weakness. It's tax breaks. First and foremost. Thank you very much. Before public comes up, we're gonna have public comment. I just asked, the last time, it's, I've had all public comment weeks yet, but it went on within five hours, and at this table, I said, any comments now from the governing body? The governing body, again, this is a very, very big issue, I'd ask possibly now if the governing body could make any comments, because I'm gonna help the public with any questions today. So I'd ask the governing body, I said, Councilman Shippin, you should probably get off the desk. How does that, right? Frank just to be safe? Yes. But okay, he said he hates me.
Just for the record, so everybody knows why I'm recusing myself, there's a lot of, a lot of hearsay going around the town, I guess is the best way to put it. Number one, I am not doing any work for Avalon Bay, I'm not bidding, my company's not bidding the job for Avalon Bay. the job for Avalon Bay. I live within 300 feet, my property in Avalon Bay, adjoining. That's why I'm recusing myself, just for the record.
Which was stated on the background previously.
Yeah, well, there's a lot.
I know, there's a lot of hearsay in our town.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn. Again, I'd like councilpeople to comment, it may help the public with any questions. So whoever likes to go first, please do.
I'll comment.
Sure. Statement, basically.
We started this process, um...
Hey, Brian.
Coming back pretty much close to the beginning of the year. It all started when, pretty much, we hired our auditor. Our auditor came in, and at that time, pretty much, I was not the favorite, that's no secret. But he came in and sort of making suggestions to us on how we can help ourselves and get us to the point where we are, pretty much almost today. He made a few recommendations, one was not to touch the Rosemont, leaving it alone, but we're past that. He also made a recommendation to us regarding seeking a pilot, and a pilot can help us get out of our debt. Listening to that, conversation started churning between us, and it was a good idea. The next step for us was to take it to the planning board. The entire council unanimously voted to go to the planning board, 100% of us, to get this process started. So we did. Land Board worked with us, I guess we went through the purchase company, correct? To do the research on the redevelopment for that particular area, which by the way cost us, how much? Ten?
I think it's $10,000.
I think it's $10,000.
I think it was $8,800.
$8,800. So the process started. There was conversation between the mayor and the planning board, some council members and the planning board. I attended a meeting at the public, at the planning board, and they were, they had good conversation, back and forth, positive, negative, back and forth, but they came back with a suggestion to follow through and move on with the pilot. After that pretty much happened, negotiations pretty started, we'd had some executive session conversation, and everybody was kind of upbeat, all of us, about following through with the pilot. The negotiation between John Ray and Avalon Bay went on for a long time to get where we are today. And I think Fred will agree with me, because he's been involved in other pilots, that we've had a really good deal for a pilot. Am I correct?
It's better than any other one that I've seen with respect to this development. Yes.
So, in my opinion, in my opinion, to help, everybody sitting in this room and everybody outside of this room, whether residential business, we're going to start the achievement of stabilizing taxes and lowering our debt. This is the first step of many, I hope, to move on. There was questions regarding the school, good questions, legitimate questions regarding issues with school. So John Lindon Ray went before the school board, and the school board auditor, another auditor, professional, is in agreement with the pilot plan, and gave his explanation of the pilot plan to the board, the school board, of how it works and what it's about. Very positive reaction from the school board, I'm sure you read it in the papers and the patch and wherever, that it was a real positive meeting, positive response from the school board, that this will have no impact on the schools. So those questions are answered. So I believe where we are today, everything has been answered, it's time to vote yes, we need to move this pilot in, we need to get started and get the growth of Bloomingdale on the path. And they're correct, we haven't contacted by people already. Everybody's watching, see what we're doing. Want to queue out the pilot program? Butler's been in the pilot program for 15 years over there, all right? It works, it works. And this is better than most. Avalon Bay is not going to go away, let's take advantage of what they're here for, start doing things for ourselves, put Bloomingdale first, forget everything else. We should forget everything else, put Bloomingdale first.
Mr. Member, one last moment, I just wanted to read this out loud, because I did go to Dieter, our auditor, because, you know, some of his numbers were a little bit different in that line, and just want to open up his spreadsheet, and he's recommending the pilot, obviously, he started the process, what I recommended to us, and his calculations, okay? You will see, he's a little bit off of mind, okay, he's saying that your benefit is 323, not 346, it's pennies, okay? The reality is that the pilot dollars, whether you look at my spreadsheet or his spreadsheet, the pilot net revenue to the borough is $436,000. There is no dispute, both the auditor and myself, all the man, matches to the penny, okay? You want to compare it to regular taxation, and the reason why these numbers are a little bit different? I'm not including the library money that we tax you for, that's something that we can use to pay down debt, or any other cost within our town. The auditor is saying, well, you're taxing for it, and it is a municipal charge, so therefore you should include it under municipal section. It's just a penny, okay? But in reality, you can't touch that money to pay down our debt, and since the plan is to pay down our debt, I haven't included any, what, in my calculations, what, you know, the difference is, not that much, okay? The dollars that you're talking about going to Library and Rose is about $10,000. It's not a make or break, it's deal, it's still a huge benefit to the town, so even if you used his numbers, $115,000, that you would have control, which I would say you don't, but he's saying you do. Comparison to 100, I'm sorry, that's accounting. Comparison to $162,000 coming to us and us having to pay, if you were here at the last meeting, you would know that we would get the municipal money, but there are expenses that we have to reimburse the developers for. You would pay to have his garbage picked up, you would pay, pay to have snow removal and soul thing, and he would come back to us with his bill, and we have to repay him for that, and we estimated that low, around $60,000. It can easily be an average of maybe to $100,000, depending on the type of year you have and how many people move into those. But, you know, everything I've done and everything that the auditor is verifying up here is using conservative numbers. So if there is any publication that's telling you that our numbers don't make sense, don't read it. Two auditors have read this, are recommending it, it's a positive for the town. We have gone through it with magnifying glass, I'm just, this is what I do for a day, okay? I put spreadsheets together, like, I take it, you know, through the vice presidents of my company to make deals happen, so these are the numbers. So I just wanted to clarify.
Any other council member, motion to stand? Alicia? Councilwoman Schorben? You have a motion?
Um, I don't believe most of these numbers. This floor is project over there, I think they should go for new taxes, and not just pilot. They're getting something they'll need to give them. Have anybody seen the drawings for the buildings over there? This is not a $19 million project, this is a $30,000 project, that's why you should assess that, and that's why you should be getting taxes. As far as the schools not getting money, the county not getting money, they're going to come and take somewhere else if they need it by the time. So my vote is no, it's not a lie. Day one, when I heard schools weren't getting money, I had no.
Well, one of the things I've discussed in the school meeting was reserving a portion just in case there was a need for some of this to come and ask us, and we can absolutely make that.
What happens at the school, I mean, you're going to tell me there's only going to be seven kids over there? I don't believe it. It's going to be 50 to 100 of us, yes, sir. Come on.
Well, agree that it's a no.
And all kinds of rules.
Agree that it's a no.
It's a no, right.
This graduating class.
Thirty years, Ray, you've locked yourself up for 30 years, what happens if you get a new governor in a few years? And this 2% cap is gone, you might have 10%, you might make a 10% cap, what happens then?
How many of you would vote for a new governor with 10% cap? Let me see, show of hand.
You don't know.
Who would vote in a new governor that's going to get rid of 2% cap?
Can you commit a change?
No one's going to get rid of 2% cap. No one, at least that one's.
Do you know that, Rick, for sure?
Yes. Common sense though.
The biggest misconception, the biggest misconception, you know, on the education part is, you know, people's comments, the board event's losing money. Board event has their budget, they can only grow a 2% cap. If the board event was to get $450,000 of new money, and they could actually implement that above their cap and do a talented and gifted program, a music program, a better curriculum, I'd have trouble supporting the pilot, because it would be going directly to education. That's not the case. This money is not going to be used directly for education, because they have their cap, and their budget is their budget, okay? So the board is not losing money, that money's going to stay home for tax relief. The issue is, when you stayed in, right, you're voting no, what is your plan? What is your plan for tax relief? You've been here 30 years.
It's $300,000 that we're getting, and that's not going to save the town.
It's $436,000.
$436,000, okay.
Taxing properly on the right amount of assessment over there, and...
$100,000.
$100,000 in taxes.
That's all they're going to give, on a $30 million project.
That's all we get to keep, to do something with.
And what happens when the county, when the county does their budget next year, and then going out, we have a $30 million project, aren't they going to come and give them money?
We had numerous presentations, I don't know if you were here for all of them, their taxes are based on rental income, not what you brought, I think they're assessed value on the cost of the build it is, it's based on income. Gross income minus expenses, and there's variables and factors in there, and Fred, you know better than I, that the number we're basing it on is directly from our tax office, who's going to ultimately be the one to tell us what this is going to be. So, you know, if it's based on income, you can't dispute, you can't say it's $30 million, it's based on income.
If they have a $30 million project, though, you're going to charge $150 a month, right?
No. The charge on average is $18,000. Mark, this is part of the negotiation, we know what the rent is, we know what the profits are.
You can sit there for your full face, like...
You're not giving me, you're not giving me...
I told you, if the system is not getting...
But I don't have another plan. But I don't think this is the right plan for the town, except that... You don't have another plan. The first plan to borough's, you know, foresight that can actually give us the revenue we need, and then, which also is catalyst for more, which is everybody has assessed $8,800 to get to this point, knowing this was the end goal, was the pilot, for that part.
Well, was that the end goal.
True. That's exactly why we get the process.
What was the angle? Just maintain...
To redevelop, to redevelop Union Avenue and Main Street, that was, that was the whole idea of the plan. And the reason for the redevelopment, to then give the ability to do zoning overlays, tax incentives, tax benefits. Before public comment, yet? Councilwoman Schorben, do you have any comments? Before public comment? And then a comment after that? Okay. Public, I hate to do this, Councilwoman Schorben, Rashford, five minutes basis before the public. Okay, so we're going to take five minutes basis. So we are in public, on ordinance 16, 2012. So anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance, please, must take a name and address from the record.
Jennifer Oldfield, 17 Cedar Street, Bloomingdale, New Jersey. First off, before any decision is made, the council needs to redo the overlay on the entire Union Avenue, Hamburg slash Main Street, so that this quote pilot program can be offered to corporations that are willing to put stores in here to bring business into this town. That is the priority, bringing business, not residential, there's more than enough homes that are up for sale due to taxes or, you know, foreclosures, it's not easy out there. I have several questions that I'm hoping can be answered tonight, because I've asked them before. Did Avalon Bay get permits for tree removals?
There's no permits required to do a site.
But as a resident, I would have to get a permit if I needed to remove more than, I believe, a certain number of trees.
That answer, then if that's the question, I don't have that answer, I can certainly get you the answer.
I appreciate it. Did Avalon Bay get soil mining permits from the DEP? And do we have those on record? Because the amount of soil that is being moved is more than an acre's worth of soil, and that is a requirement by the DEP. Avalon Bay has stated in the past and on the record that they have sold sites that they have built. What will happen, should Avalon Bay decide that they are selling this site, what happens to the taxes? Is the town protected? Are the people that buy these units, because there are units that will be for sale and not rented, are they going to be protected, or does the municipality wind up in a lawsuit?
Can I address that one right now?
Please.
The pilot follows the deed, so if they were to sell in 10, 12 years their project, the pilot would stay in force on that property. Your question was, there are, there's going to be owners, not just renters?
Correct.
At Avalon Bay?
Didn't.
No, it's 100% right.
It is 100% because there was talk and discussion.
It's 100% right.
Okay, when Avalon Bay went to court the last time, it was for the number of water meters to be insedald and all of that stuff, and the cost that this would incur to them. Well, they got a break. It was reduced by what, $400,000, I believe?
But the sewer was bumped by $600,000, so the borough net gained on that settlement. Got it?
Not only was the cost reduced for Avalon Bay, but the number of co-op units was also reduced. Every time that Avalon Bay didn't get what they wanted, they ran to court, went in front of a judge, and we got a new one, and the municipality had to do this, that, and the other thing. And the municipality did. But I'm now to the point where you have a big builder who comes in here and is trying to tell us what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and only how much they're going to pay. Meanwhile, the rest of the taxpayers are going to have to pick up their school debt that they don't have to pay. What happens if the schools decide that they're going to build a new school? Who picks that up? The taxpayers. But it won't be the taxpayers from Avalon Bay, will it? Is that fair to the rest of us? I don't think so.
Let me address a couple of your comments.
Okay.
First is the reduction in Mount Laurel. The reduction in Mount Laurel was not part of litigation, it was not. They went, they entered back into litigation over the interpretation by the planning board of the hookup ordinance. They were arguing that there's one hookup to the board name, and the planning board interpreted as there was individual hookups for every, every unit. And at the same time, in the middle of their application, the town, the governing body, which I, you know, you served at that time, changed the sewer hookup fee, almost tripled, joined the course of their application. So they went to court to get relief on both those issues. Both our attorneys, Joe McMahon and Mark Semare, advised us that they would win both those issues. Settlement was a reduction in the water to one main, but a full settlement on the increased cost for the sewer. So the borough ended up gaining, it was $682,000 in hookup fees as a result of selling the litigation, number one, number two. The borough, with the judge's approval, accepted the reduction of Mount Laurel, but the developer is paying $100,000 into a Mount Laurel fund that can then be distributed to seniors who qualify in our borough, and it'll count towards our co-op obligation, such as roof replacements, boiler replacements, and they will help us meet some of that shortfall as a result. And then there was a $147,000 counterclaim by us, which was settled, which we'll be seeing this year, which helped us with this year's budget. So just to clarify those points.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. According to the figures that have been put out, the county is losing approximately $100,000. Am I correct or am I awful little?
County would normally get $115,000. They're going to be getting $23,000.
Of course, my tax...
So basically, the county is then going to turn around and raise their taxes to the rest of us because they're losing on Avalon Bay also. And I can't really see the county giving up almost $100,000. Doesn't make sense. What county would?
It's administratively driven. The only one who has to say, if this was to be approved, the DCA has to.
Pollack, can I ask a question there? One, if you just passed a pilot, other towns are passing a pilot. So the same exact thing that you just brought up, that we're all paying for the county, all the other towns are taking advantage and we're getting penalized for it. It's about time you take advantage. So your argument holds no water.
Mr. Yasi, my father always told me that if there are ten people running off the cliff, are you going to follow them?
This isn't a cliff.
I don't follow.
This isn't a cliff. This is a jumping board.
I have spoken to communities that have regretted their decision to go along with pilot programs.
And what were the terms of their pilots?
Thirty years.
No, what was the revenue terms?
I don't have all of their figures with me, but you know something? It becomes a domino effect when you allow it for one, then you have others. I have no problem giving a pilot program to an industry. Bring industry in here. Give them a pilot program for 10 years. You have...
The whole points. Excuse me. This is catalyst.
You have businesses that are here in town now who could use help and redo the fronts of their buildings. Give them a tax incentive. Make it attractive. You don't give away the taxes that these people, a lot of people have gone into foreclosure. They're losing their homes because of the taxes. It's reality.
And the benefit of the pilot is going to affect, change that more than straight taxes?
That's a fact. Mr. Mayor, I am not so sure that it is right for this council or any other council to lock in a 30-year contract tax-wise for one site. I have an issue with that. If I was sitting up there as a council member and I had, there is no way I would force future councils to live by an edict that I had a decision on. It isn't right. It's a 30-year... This is my opinion to which I am entitled.
Did you ever enter into a contract that exceeds your term on the governing body?
I may have.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Every bond. Every...
Every debt, every bond, every employee contract.
I understand that.
You entered into a contract that exceeds your term.
I'm not going for 30 years.
If you got a bond, if you bonded $12 million and you're six years on the council, you've done it for 30 years.
I wasn't on the council for six years, Mr. Mayor.
Then you worked in $6 million for your three years. You've committed the borough for 30 years, and I'm not...
The items that were bonded when I sat up there had to do with the DPW whose building was falling down on our... You brought it up. Let me finish. A building that was falling down around employees' ears that had been there for how long, Mr. Ehrenberg?
Almost 40.
Almost 40 years. It had to be done. A fire engine, because we had these sites coming in, we needed a fire engine to be able to save lives for these new buildings and the higher buildings that were coming in. These were done. I'll keep going if you want.
Go as long as you like, and I agree with you. That's why I stated in my statement if you were here before that bonding is every governing body. You do just the things you're stated.
Bonding is given when you're running a municipality. It doesn't matter what town you're in. You could be down the shore. You could be up in North Jersey Sussex County. Doesn't matter because municipalities in this day and age do not have cash on hand. Nobody does. But to turn around and lock us in for 30 years on a $3 million gift to Avalon Bay? No, I'm sorry. And it's just not right. To me, my opinion, it looks like the Republicans are being the watchdogs, and that's where I am concerned, for the taxpayers.
One comment on what you talked about the county. What the county is not getting is $92,000.
A year.
Right. And Avalon Bay's benefit is only $90,000. We are getting this program with all county money. We're keeping every single dime of our tax dollars to benefit Bloomingdale residents, plain and simple.
And pay down the debt. Anyone else, please? She's quick.
Karen, Twenty-One Highland Road. Okay, I agree with Jennifer on a lot of the stuff, and here's one. I've done a lot of research based on the short time I had, and she's right. I'd like to know about where the pilot is. Is it a corporation or nonprofit? Because pilot programs were set up to help nonprofits to give the town money because nonprofits don't contribute. So the pilots, that's the original concept for pilots. Then they were moved on to redevelopments to help other towns to take over depleted areas, areas that were not going to get developed. So you're right, they gave these programs most of the time. A friend of mine, and I've called a couple of places, once again, I did speak about Rosa Car, and they're in a pilot program right now or trying to do one with Avalon Bay. Still hasn't materialized. They've even tried a law firm to deal with it. They couldn't deal with it.
Just a little more facts on that, because they can't, they're dealing with that, they can't get it done.
Well, they tried to walk through to handle the pilot issue because they were being sued by Avalon Bay.
Because of Mount Laurel, affordable housing issue?
Well, no, they're not in the Mount Laurel. It's a redevelopment area that had been, they were looking at doing.
And why they being sued by Avalon Bay?
Mr. Landell is also a part of that.
Well, he's the vice president of the town. What?
Well, one of the vice presidents, no, total...
But what was the reason they're being sued by Avalon Bay?
To provide some of the things that they wanted to do. I know, I mean, I can do this year, I'm not going to read the whole page. But I also, which I piled up on, and I didn't realize this, is that a neighbor of mine gave me a newspaper article called The Argus, which is a pre-paper, and who wrote a wonderful article about it. She interviewed the administrator in the Newton Township, and I was able to call him on Friday. They have three pilot programs, but two of the three are businesses. And he brought a person back in who was going to open a business in Pennsylvania. But this person brought in employees. They're not apartments. I said to him, when I talked to him, he was very nice, very informative, that we were comparing ample storage. And so I said to him, what do you do with the current people in Newton who aren't getting these pilot programs? They have, they're the Suffolk County, the state.
The ones that are not in the redevelopment area.
Right. And he says, that's a risk they have to take. And that's really what I'm getting to see. What I also wanted to say was the other, the third, was a nonprofit organization, which is a housing for seniors. But once again, they fell under the nonprofit. That's why these programs got in there. My point is, is that, you know, it does sound great. It sounds wonderful. We'd love to get our taxes down. We'd love to get rid of our debt. But I need to know that if we do do this, that the money is going to help defer our taxes. We're going to hit with the highest tax rate in this whole county and the whole state. I mean, I was lucky I didn't, but everybody else did. And I just need to know, I've been here 36 years, and I just can't keep paying more money. I mean, I'm still working, and I shouldn't be going to work. My age right now. But I can't do that. I mean, I'm paying, I was paying $12,500, and now I'm down because I was overpaying for what I inherited for the last 20 years. My whole point is, I don't want to see the rest of the town overpay. I think we need to put in there, and taught you about this the last time, is protection, that any money that, if in way of this Avalon Bay thing goes through, that it does go back to the taxpayers if you have to do your 50%. I think every taxpayer needs to see a tax reduction starting in 2014. No excuses, no this other thing. We'll work with it, and they need, they need, if it's $100 off their annual bill. It's something that this town needs. They just got hit with the worst tax increase, and we need help. And I need, we have people wanting to move, and they can't move. I've had people tell me, I had someone who was in a Zoom class tell me, say, they loved the house they found in Bloomingdale, but moved to Kenwa. No way were they going to pay Bloomingdale property taxes. So I need to know that that's what you're going to do. I don't want to know that halfway down the line, oh, well, we now have this to pay for, we now have that to pay for. I know we have to bring down our debt. Of course, we have to bring down our debt, but I'm not a math person, but right now, what are we paying the debt with? If we didn't have Avalon Bay come in here, what are we paying the debt with? The taxes we can't... So now that Avalon Bay comes in, the money that you're saying, and one other question, you said something about a bond, that you were looking to bond this?
I called our bond counsel, and the discussion was...
Before you go, all the presentations Councilman Yasi has done is not about this concept. He's about...
Right, but this is...
Well, you brought it up...
No, no, he's going to go to it. I don't want anyone confusing the two. All his presentations were using this money, pay down debt, offset taxes. The debt Councilman Yasi has a brilliant idea that...
It's a what if, and our bond counsel finds it very intriguing and it's never been done before, and he doesn't want to take it just to the finance board because he knows there's going to be a bunch of questions asked. He wants to take it directly to the top, to go down to the state and have the conversation. Can we take this guaranteed money and sell the cash flow to a bank, which they would buy, kind of like if you won the lottery, all right, they pay your cash for it.
Right, right. Paying off.
And go sell it, $12 million, pay down our debt. We have $1.2 million a year to give back to our community.
Okay, but we have a problem. What would be our bond rating? The towns in all these towns here are getting hit hard. Could we even begin to figure that out? Bloomingdale has a bond rating, doesn't it? Like an A or an A, AB? Every town has to be rated...
Our debt would be gone.
No, no, but to slow that bond, to ask for that bond to go out. When you're going out with the bond, you're saying to people here, I want you to buy into our town.
It's a refinancing call, Ed, right?
Right. We have to guarantee those payments, correct?
Right, which is guaranteed now by a pilot agreement that's in writing. So he finds it very intriguing. There is a lot of...
No, and that's what I'm trying to understand. I understand bond concepts. That's why I'm trying to understand.
Right, but we can't even have that conversation. We can't even go to the state and have the what if.
Well, you brought it up. I'm bringing it up. It was in your meeting. So I needed to understand.
My point is, we need to get past tonight approving this in order to now to take it to the next step and get it in front of the state and hear from the head of the state if they want to go with this.
But even the state denies that concept. All the presentations shown are still achieving...
No, and I understand that. No, I understand that. And I just wanted to recap that. Is that something you brought up, and I talk to people about bonds and getting to understand all of that? But what Jennifer was saying is that, John, you know I have a history dealing with Avalon, starting out with 27 COA, starting in 2010, and then finding an excuse in November of '11, bringing it down to 15, and then the issue in January of '17. Now, I know COA may go away or has gone away, but the point is, I don't really feel comfortable with them, that they don't screw us. And I know Mr. Landell's not here to come up and make his comments, and I just want to make sure that, one, we built in any safeguards that should there be any inputs in this school under the number of kids going to school, that there is a cap that they can or will defer some of that money to the school.
That would be controlled by the town.
So all of that gets controlled here.
Pilot is pilot with us in that. We made the commitment, if this was to pass, that the next thing we would do is introduce an ordinance declaring that money. The only way we can guarantee is by ordinance, that we would declare that money to pay down debt, stay away from taxes, prevent it from the school if there was an increased cost as a result of Avalon Bay. We do it by ordinance. It's now local law that has to be done. If a governing body in the future was to undo that, that would be a public process, and I think the public would be quite outraged if that commitment was made, that this is what, why the pilot was done, the purpose is for, and the only objection that we could say to give the residents is an ordinance. In the future, if the concern is, what, 10 years, the governing body can repeal that ordinance? True, but at least it's a public process that I think would be difficult for a governing body to ever to do that, so.
Okay, and just, like, the whole concept of the pilot, I mean, this is, and I don't know who else to call, if I call the, he'd say, county courthouse or the tax people, and I ask the person, what happens with your county, the money you're not getting? Cheating you to know what a pilot was. So I figure, well, how is she going to answer these questions or ask her any other question? My whole question is, is that, based on what I've been reading, it seems to apply to corporations who can and need certain applications. An apartment complex is, is you bringing in more cost? And the other thing I still want on this ordinance, that they will pick up their garbage, whatever, 30 years, no, 30 years. I don't want them coming back. Mark my words on my record, they will come back.
It's in the agreement now.
I don't care. They were in the agreement with the 15 COA, and that got darned to seven. And I still have all the minutes in the meeting when that guy said, no, they wouldn't change. So I don't...
Actually, the judge accepted that change, and they put money in a law...
Not that maybe this changed, but they didn't accept the, they went down to the 15 because there was a cost containment. It was costing them too much money. They were losing.
Before the last...
Yeah, the 27 went to 15 because they said it was costing them too much money.
I think there's a lot of passion on just people, and tell me if I'm wrong, including yourself, that just have an issue because it's Avalon Bay. And because nobody wanted to hear the first one. I believe that is part of it. I just hear that where they're a multimillion dollar company, they sued us, why give them anything? And I get all that, but that really has nothing to do...
But they came in under the builder's remedy, and yes, Jennifer's right. They didn't have to meet anything. They didn't. They, as a regular builder, didn't have to do all that stuff. They didn't have to do anything. I didn't even know this is going to happen. I'm a poor neighbor who can't, and you know the pain, the noise and what's going on there. It's ridiculous.
And why, let me ask you, why did their ability to come in under builder's remedy even occur in the first place? Why did that happen?
Because we didn't hear.
Correct. The borough can do its diligence over 30 years.
They know to do this because if you reason Avalon Bay, this is what they do.
That's their business. That's their business. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, because that's their business. Federal Hill did the same thing. They were first to get the right to build.
Yeah, okay, and they come in, and then they start reducing our COA obligation. That's what I'm...
But that's all up to the court. That's not even controlled locally. The court was the one that did that.
The 15 didn't bring down by the court. That got reduced. I could be wrong, and I'll research it again. But I know they want to complain that they were having cost containment, that they couldn't afford this. They reduced the number of...
The judge had to relieve that because it was in front of the judge. The borough wouldn't have the ability to relieve that without judge's permission? Absolutely not. My point is, my point is, there's a lot of passion just surrounding Avalon Bay, and regardless of how they got here and why they're here, how wealthy they are, and how terrible it's happening.
It's hard record, and if they don't, yeah, I mean, it's...
Well, I'm saying, my theory is, they're here for all those reasons. There's nothing we can do about that.
We can protect anything that they try to pull against.
Correct, and let's get the most for the borough out of the deal. Can you imagine, after everything you just said, I'll call it spot zoning under affordable housing, builder's remedy, reduce their fees, reduce their COA, and after all that, the borough's going to get $100,000 and have to pick up their garbage, platter snow, and pay for their streetlights?
Because they want to get in here, and believe me, there is something that I...
No, you missed...
You know, I know what your point is, and you know what my point is. If they had kept changing and reclassifying us as a final payment or a moving payment, that's what really annoys me. But that's-
That's not good with the pilot, though.
But if, that's just another little thing in there. It is passion because I thought them and the fact that they keep reducing everything-
I get it, I get it, but none of us here control that.
I don't know, well, let me ask you, is there any way under this pilot, as a lawyer, that they can come back and claim, oh, this is too constant containment, I'm going to have to reduce it?
They cannot reduce the pilot contribution, there's a floor in here of $550,000. So, they can't say we're going to pay less, they can't. But if I may, I'd like to just add some comments about what you had to say. And I would just say by way of background, I've had more run-ins with developers. I've never represented a developer, so I will say this, hope it's okay, Mayor, but I understand what you're saying and what other people have said about the affordable housing issue. Watching it on the sidelines, representing other communities, putting certain developers and their legal positions in place. Say, a neighborhood community was Cajunian, three different courts, that we pushed their rights to where they really belong. And I was very much involved in that and took a lot of heat from the developers. But in this case, I would agree, and I can't say I'm qualified to say that I stood in there and know all the facts of the case. I don't like the sounds of a developer getting a break on affordable housing because affordable housing is very costly to municipalities. I hear it, I really do, and I say that based on my experience and a little bit without all the facts of this case. But I'm troubled every time I hear it because you come in on a builder's remedy and you wind up with seven units. I can tell you as a municipal attorney, that's not good, that's troublesome, I agree with you. Now, I will say with respect to this agreement, it's a little bit different because this time, I think the parties came in on more of a level playing field. If anything, Bloomingdale had the advantage because it's pretty much take it or leave it. And we put out, they put out a number, a number that they're giving to, based on my research, all the other towns they're negotiating. And we came back and said, no, no, it's got to be almost three times the amount. And after all the yelling and screaming and carrying on and name-calling and everything else, we stuck with that position because we said, this is the way it's going to be. Maybe they weren't used to, think I'm not getting their way, but I thought to myself, they're not going to do it. They're not going to do it because they're going to have to explain this to all the other municipalities that they gave Bloomingdale the very best deal. And I felt that if my job was to negotiate this, that this, what we have come up with is a very good proposal and is very much beneficial to the borough. Unlike some of the other things I've seen, I can't, I'm not pointing the fingers at anybody, but I get it because one affordable housing unit is worth much more than, a couple, much more than $80,000 or $90,000 apiece. So, I'm sort of floored by that. But then I turn around and this negotiation, I'd say, is separate and apart. The downside to this is if you don't do it, well, you lose out on some of the benefits that have been pointed out. And the developer loses out, but I'm not worried about the developer. What I said in the negotiations, I said to the mayor, I said to Mr. Yasi, I don't care about that. Don't worry about whatever numbers they come up with, get the numbers you need. It's a different type of negotiation than court and give and take and all that other stuff that's happened in the past that makes me sort of cringe when I hear about it with affordable housing. With respect to this agreement, totally different. And, you know, you mentioned Newton and that's Thorolabs, they were over in Andover, they moved next door to Newton. But that was a pilot used in a different way, too. That was, but not a way similar to here where at a benefit, actually, the town financed $4 million and Thorolabs has to pay that back over 30 years. And even if you look at this agreement, and I understand what you're saying about jobs, but $4 million is going to be paid back here and you're not loaning the money in a matter of seven years. That's a 30-year deal for a major corporate headquarters. So, it's used in a different way, much more to the advantage here that I could say to my, you know, to my client, this is something I can put my hands on. I'm not saying that's a bad deal, it's just different circumstances. And then with respect to the county, I would say, everyone may have opinions about the school. Remember, the money's going to one place for everyone when it goes to the school. It's dedicated to specific, a specific use and a specific demographic. But we can't charge, no matter what in this negotiation, we can't charge the developer by the number of kids. We'd all like, can't tax for kids essentially. So, it is what it is, whether we make this deal or not, so that's just the way the laws work. But with respect to the county, I can say, I really wouldn't worry about the county in this context. It's not a significant dollar for the county. The county budget is $400 million. Bloomingdale's budget is $10 million. So, it's much more, it makes much more direct impact to the residents of the town. Like, when I think of the give and take, I understand the school issue, I think everything's been tried to be addressed. But with respect to the county, I would say respectfully, have it provide services and things of that nature. But in this context, $100,000 over their $400 million budget, they won't miss it as much as it's a benefit to the borough. That's the only difference I have. But I understand the history, I don't, doesn't sound too good, but this is a different test.
Well, I've just been very concerned, very conscious of all the changes they've done and how they come in and present themselves.
I think that's why we put a four in, so they wouldn't try that and that's why we also put an increase in after we got continued resistance to an increase. That's where we felt like they were going to beat us in the increases, no matter what. Even if you, you know, if the council's talked about tax relief, if you don't have an increase in taxes the next four or five years, the 550 is going up 2% no matter what. It's not tied, for good or bad, but it's not tied to your tax increase. They have to pay an increase every year, so.
Yes, of course.
No, for different, okay, after the first year, sure.
Oh, okay, sure, well, thank you.
Thank you, Marv.
We have an hour, thank you.
Anyone else I know? Dave Wappelhurst, 101 Natalie Court. First and foremost, may I ask your council members, take off your council hats, put on your taxpayer hats. This sounds to me, this pilot opportunity sounds the first opportunity for real growth. We have not had this opportunity, we'd be foolish to pass it up, okay? Our auditor, both on the Board of Ed and the town, a bond agreement, they think it's a positive for the borough. Our own attorney is saying it's a positive for the borough. So, I don't understand why council members or taxpayers in general would be against this. You know what? We cannot continue to do the same things over and over and expect results. That's the definition of insanity. We have the opportunity beforehand, before us, to actually make a difference and to help your taxpayers, neighbors and colleagues. You have it before you, you can go down in history being known as a council that did something for the benefit of this town and the taxpayers. And I think it would be negligent for anyone to vote this down. You really would, not as a council person, but as a taxpayer. This is, it's a golden opportunity and I would hate to think that anyone would vote party-line when it's strictly financial taxpayer matter. And I hope you all will do the right thing for everyone who's sitting out here and who couldn't get here this evening. Thank you.
Dawn Hudson, 101 Madison Street. I felt it necessary to get up again because I know that there were some people that weren't here at the last meeting. And say what I need to say again, and that is that I think this is a fantastic program for the borough of Bloomingdale. As I said at the last meeting, you know, when my husband and I bought our house, since then, our taxes have tripled and we are to the point where it's getting unaffordable. If this program is going to stabilize my taxes and pay off the debt in Bloomingdale, I'm all for it. And I know that we've had, tonight, people say, well, I have a problem with Avalon Bay, the fact that we're giving them a tax break. And as I said the last time, and I'll reiterate again, I don't care what Avalon Bay is getting. It doesn't mean anything to me that they're getting a break. What matters to me is what I'm getting out of this. And what should matter to everyone in this room is what they're getting out of this and that is stabilizing our taxes finally. I did appreciate at the last meeting that Mrs. Shortman wanted to go to the Board of Ed and make sure that she was comfortable with their decision and I really did appreciate that. And I attended the Board of Ed meeting when they discussed the pilot program and I thought it was fantastic that, you know, they were in favor of this and that their auditor got up and his exact words were, this is a win-win for Bloomingdale. I've looked at the numbers, I've studied the numbers, this is a no-brainer. Somebody gave me $100,000 in one hand, that's great. But if someone gave me 400 and whatever it is, $35,000 on the other hand and said, I'll increase that every, you know, 2% for 30 years, I'm going to take the larger amount of money. It's a no-brainer. I really encourage the council to vote yes on this, I think it's great. I think it's great that this council has brought this to Bloomingdale. This is the best thing that has happened to us in a long time. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
John Darcy, 80 South Road. I guess the same thing, I would just like to express my concerns also that the council vote yes on what I've seen just tonight as a win-win. What I've read in the paper with the auditor for the Board of Education was that they haven't seen a pilot program in quite a long time and this is an indication that the economy might be turning around. Over the course of the last six, seven months, whatever, I've heard a lot of council members talk about the economy and how it's affecting our taxpayers, the residents of Bloomingdale, the amount of homes that are in foreclosure, and I totally get that. But here's an opportunity where you have a chance to make a change. There's been an auditor that said that they haven't seen pilot programs in a while and that this is an indication that the economy is making, you know, is possibly coming around and making a change for the better. You're all elected, I don't think anyone there, perhaps maybe apart from Ray, I do know what you do for a living, would be maybe qualified in deciding whether or not this is the right thing. And that's why we have auditors and attorneys. And as Mr. Wappelhurst pointed out, they all agree that this is a great thing. You all agreed in January or whenever it was to spend $80, $100 to pursue this and we've come to this point. All of your support staff, the people that you appointed, all agree, or payroll, all agree that this is a good thing. So, I think you need to take their advice and vote yes. Now, if it is voted down, I would like to know, because there was one council member tonight that said that I don't have a vision, I am going to vote no. You can say whatever you want until you're red in the face, but I am going to vote no. So, Mr. Cocklin, I will direct this to you and not ask you for a response unless you want to, but I could say, you don't have a vision, so, like, what are you going to do? Because there's a lot of us that would like to know that. If you vote no and it does get voted down, what's the backup plan? What are we going to do? Because, you know, like Dave said, we haven't done anything. And if we continue to do nothing, we're going to be in the same place that we've been in. So, let's do something that's going to be good. So, if you choose to, I'll step away, but if you choose to respond, I would also know, what is your vision? I know you said you don't have it, but God, I hope you do. I hope that you just didn't want to share it with us, but I challenge you, please share with me what your vision is or the rest of you if we decide to vote this down. Because I want to know, where's my relief coming from? Thank you.
I'll respond.
Thank you.
I don't have the, but I don't believe that this extra money that we're going to get, getting allegedly is going to save it down. And I think we're going in the wrong direction. Keep saying, John, we're going to get only $100,000 to build a regular tax plant. Four people, you can't be late, have to pay $100,000 in taxes, four homes, you can't be late. Six homes in my street pay over $100,000 in taxes. How can you say a project over here that's worth millions and millions of dollars is only going to give the town $100,000? It doesn't make any sense.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
The project based on buying towns and taxes, that's right, is clearly assessed $19 million. We're going to collect $700,000 worth of gas dollars, $700,000.
Compared to the $25,000 of one house, what you're using today.
Right, so $700,000, we're going to collect it from there. Our portion is $162,000, what we do with it to provide services. But that also comes with the cost of picking up their garbage and cement plumbing and salting and their streetlights and all of those things. So, once you remove the cost, our net dollars gained from that project is approximately $100,000. Well, that's exactly right, because they're way too low and because the pilot-
It's lost in $60,000 to $100,000 to pick up their garbage, but it's still a little roads. They had one rep, a council-
Would you like me to show you based on what you're paying for?
We currently pay Waterfall Village-
Waterfall Village?
Which is a smaller town.
I can show you, that $60,000 is a very conservative amount.
This number wasn't just pulled out of the-
Waterfall Village has more roads than here.
No, no, Harp, Harp. We paid, we paid $40,000 today to Waterfall Village to reimburse the Harp. This $60,000 we're using is conservative, it's a conservative number. It's a conservative, prior to our DPW planning in private lake communities, we were paying $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 annually on these lake communities. So, if you take conservatively, the cost of Waterfall Village's garbage, the cost of lake diaphragm snowfling that we used to do, paid for now, it's half a dozen. That's $80,000.
But why is it flooded still?
You want to hear more of the first quarter? I mean, if we can run a street sweeper in Riverdale and make $300 a payoff, we should be able to plow the snow practically nothing over there. I mean, there's only a few roads in there, just a few roads, I have the drugs. So, you're saying there's day normal taxes, pay for picking up garbage, use our van, our overtime, our payroll to plow the roads and that, so the 116, that it's got to be less.
I don't want to pay some in the bill. But the 160 is going to come with the cost of people being there. Whether we pick it up or we reimburse it, and by the way, they have the option, not us. We don't get to mandate, who does it?
Right.
They get to decide who's going to be there, services, they're going to give us a bill or they agree to allow us to do it.
That's the Kellywell, not our law.
That's a Kellywell.
Another advantage, which is so important, is locking in the Kellywell services that we don't have to provide for 30 years, tipping fees. The garbage tipping fees in 30 years, 22 years, in 18 years, those costs are going to be astronomical for towns. We don't have to worry about that with Avalon Bay. And I'm telling you that the net 116, which is after the service is provided, overtime, we're going to be at a rate even possibly costless money for that development because of the cost of fuel and tipping fees and labor, rising and rising and rising. We have to provide those services. We have, as a few of the public said, we have two auditors, an attorney and, um, there's one other professional, all agreeing that this makes sense. Oh, a tax assessor, basically telling us what you're going to base the tax on. And you're-
Did anybody pay attention?
You're saying you don't agree with any of them. You don't agree with the assessor because we're not taxing them enough. Well, that's the man we rely on, that's our professional, two auditors and an attorney. So, I'll base my decision on those professional recommendations.
One thing you can do is if you were to enter into this agreement, you could in effect sell those services to Avalon Bay. You could say to them, we'll provide the services competitively as a shared service type of arrangement.
Which is already something Ted and I were talking about is we, we don't have to, we don't have to provide the service, but again, enter into a shared service and have them pay us to do it.
Is your own on top of this?
It's just such a whole lot. Anyone else wish you could?
Mark Klein, 13 Holland Ave. Speaking to the rest of the four years, because this gentleman over here is going to end it. We said that it was possibly, we could take 100 kids into our school system without a financial burden on the school system. That was your problem, that was Mrs. Shortman's problem, okay, we're okay with that. We've got room for kids, we're not going to see 100 kids in there. Just the fact that this is going to help this town, my parents are leaving this town because they couldn't afford to stay here. My in-laws are getting close to it, they need to leave here soon because they can't afford to stay here. We've got to do something, we really, really need to do something. Rest of yous need to vote yes, I'm asking you, please, please vote yes. That's all. All's in your court.
Good job.
Anyone else wish, yes, Penny, I'm sorry, you need to go on.
Benny Gray, 33 Rich Road. At the last meeting, some of the council members were here. When I started to quote from the report from Mr. Matthew Boxer, Mr. Ron Lydell jumped up from the gallery and more or less told me a wire, actually even told me a wire. And he said that the report was out of date because the date is August 2010 and that his final comment was that Mr. Box- was that Mr. Boxer himself has disavowed this report. Well, I don't know, Mr. Semra, were you able to find out about the validity of the report?
I didn't hear, I had never heard up to that point that it was disavowed. So I, and I read the report and I, I didn't see anything that disavowed what he had said. So I couldn't verify this.
Okay. Well, I knew you had a busy schedule, so I myself went to the state comptroller's office and I spoke with several of the chief investigators there. And I got this back and I wanted to go into the record. It says here, "I discussed your inquiry with the comptroller. Mr. Boxer advised that our report on a programing examination of municipal tax abatements is not outdated and neither he nor anyone who works for this office has disavowed it. We certainly believe our report is unbiased and not skewed as to the potential merits or lack thereof when municipalities engage in pilot programs." I'm wondering, why was it so necessary for Mr. Liddell to lie like that? What was the advantage? It wasn't my advantage to lie, but there must be something that he needed to lie about. So I'm just cautioning the people. What Mrs. Tierney said, I don't trust her. And maybe that's with a passion. And I also, if the next meeting, I think maybe we need a sergeant at arms because he came pretty darn close and I didn't know how far he was going to come or what he was going to do. So I think maybe if we could have that, let me present it to him. Because passions do run hot. See it today, you know?
There's a police home, sir, outside of here.
Is it real? Did he run fast? Thank you very much. Why don't you go on then?
Just run faster than you else.
May, this may help. We've been through this negotiation and, and, and please understand something. I don't like Mr. Liddell. Okay? I've never liked it, the negotiations went pretty intense, heated.
Don't even go there.
I'm right with you people.
No, go there. And you're illegally on the void. Don't even say those things. I'm just pointing you, you shouldn't say that.
I'm just saying, to make you guys more comfortable-
Someone who's been in HR for a long time, don't say. That's all I'm going to say. Just advise.
If we be, this isn't, this isn't a, this isn't a personal benefit for-
I'm not protecting you.
I appreciate it, but this isn't a personal benefit for any-
Let me, let me just say, first of all, I think I know what the councilman is trying to say. And I understand your concern. It's very, very concerned. It's very nice of you to say that. I mean, Mr. Liddell's a public figure too. So he's going to have to have some big skit.
And he's a lawyer.
And I'll, okay, I'll, I'll say that I'll stop Mr. Yaskey, but I think he, one thing I'll say is I was on a conversation where I had never heard so much yelling and screaming from a developer at a client of mine. And, you know, we hung up the phone and I said to Mr. Yaskey, like, I, that just was totally inappropriate and unnecessary. Mr. Yaskey said, I don't really care what he calls me, what he says, I just want what's right for the borough in these negotiations. Because I understand, he, it was just absolutely inappropriate, wasn't appropriate, what he said and how he behaved with Ms. Frank at the last meeting either. And we did say something to him about that. So, but again, I think it goes back to we're concerned about the benefit to the borough. But it's okay to make your comments, Mr. Yaskey, but don't say anything real personal.
Okay. But what I'm making here is that pilots in general are anywhere from eight to ten percent of the revenue that the developer earns, right, through the rentals, and that's all they pay. And pilots are usually set in places like a burnt down building, a building in need of redevelopment, like you would see it in Newark, right? They return sections of that town and call it redevelopment and give it pilot plan. They're in need of the revenue because they're not getting it, right? They're burnt down buildings or they're disaster areas. We didn't have that problem here. This guy was building here regardless. We had the upper hand in these negotiations. And all we've given away, and not all of it, is the county money. The rest of your taxes are staying here and they're going to pay down our debt. It's going to benefit us. I don't know how, how else to say this. It's for you. It's, it's not for me, John, or anyone up here. It's not about us. It's about us collectively as taxpayers.
And I go back to the value of not providing Kellyville services. If you did it on six thousand, sixty thousand a year, that's going to be compounded over twenty years to eight dollars that we're going to be on the hook for on normal taxes to provide those services.
Mike Fitzpatrick does snow plowing and things of that sort, I guess, for a living. And he stood up here and he said, you know, your numbers are very conservative. They're anywhere from even to a hundred thousand bad winter, you're going to be paying most of your taxes to reimburse them.
There was blizzard winters we were paying in Campy Lake, which has maybe tad less garbage than Avalon Bay, but forty-six thousand dollars in snow.
What?
Well, I asked him. I asked him. Okay, that's true.
Did I ask?
Did I say?
You said Ken.
I asked him.
My guess.
No, the record, correct. Relax.
Somebody's been taking money.
So, okay, I'm sorry. Someone else, please? Yes?
Frank O'Reilly, twenty-one Pearl Street. I would just like to say that in twenty-six years I've been here, this sounds like the best deal that I've seen before of the urban Bloomingdale. During that twenty-six year period, and actually prior to that, I've seen a lot of mistakes made by the mayor and council. The first one would be not purchasing Star Lake, which is now a tax road, a tax road. Another mistake prior to me getting here, I think, was building the apartments in back of Triborough Leagues and similar family neighborhoods where they have no business being, bringing down the values into those neighborhoods. When you look around town, you see all the variances that were granted for people who now had two family homes. One particular example is if you look at the house on Oak Street, which looks more like a parking lot than a house. It's just, it's just terrible decisions that I've made over the years. We sold off the old Borough Hall, which I think is a mistake. And we also turned down a possible land grant for Wal Fields off Siller Street, which I understand that residence we're hosting. They also wanted to address COA. I've heard a lot of talk about COA tonight. As it turns out, I think COA is a non-issue. There is no available land for a developer to build on. So COA essentially has gone away. There is no COA issue. So I would just like to say it again, but I think this is the best deal that I've seen in twenty-six years in Bloomingdale. I think this really would benefit the residents of the town. Now, I think, Mr. Yaskey, that you made a statement that you would see, what, one point two five million dollars a year if, if you were to pay down the entire amount of money that we owe the borough?
That's, that's a portion of our entire budget.
Now, I think there's approximately eight thousand families in Bloomingdale?
Eight thousand people.
So how many families?
Seventy-six hundred population by twenty-two.
Well, that comes down to just wishful thinking. That comes down to approximately about a hundred and fifty dollars a person or a family in a tax refund?
What's that? How many taxing entities are there? Is that seven thousand?
It's about twenty-two hundred, twenty-two, twenty-two, five. So it's one point two five million divided by-
Five hundred bucks.
Okay, five hundred bucks. Which is something to think about. But anyway, I think this is a great deal for the town of Bloomingdale. I'd like to see it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
May I speak?
Certainly can.
Glenn Shifman, fifty-three Ridge Road. The COA, as the gentleman said, he said there's no vacant lands. I don't agree with that. The property that is Gamal Garden Center, which used to be the golf course, that's privately owned, there is, excuse me?
It's not for sale as far as on order.
It's still property that can be developed.
Yes.
Okay. The property that the municipality owns that runs adjacent with Union Ave, there's acreage in there.
Only if the borough puts it up for sale.
That's right. But it can be used.
Right.
Right. And that's where we come up with the redevelopment housing.
And redevelopment housing?
Yeah.
What is that?
Yeah, the redevelopment land.
Redevelopment area.
Right, right. And when we put something, when we put something in a redevelopment area, okay, which we have done, there, there are standards to it. Everywhere from A to H, okay? And on vacant land, it states here that it's either C or E. And C reads out as land owned by municipality, county, local housing authority, redevelopment agency, or redevelopment entity, or unapproved vacant land that has been vacant for ten years prior to the adoption of a resolution and is not likely to be developed through private capital due to property's location, remoteness, lack of means of access topographically or nature of soil. Okay? We put this into place after Avalon Bay has already started. Okay? So the private capital was already in place. That's number one. Okay? Now if we go to the letter, the other one of A, which, which handles the vacant land areas, which reads out, growing lack of complete, lack or a complete lack of property utilization of an area exposed by condition of the title, diverse ownership of the property, or other conditions resulting in a stagnant or not fully productive condition of the land potentially used for and contributing to the serving public health, safety, and welfare. Okay? There was no problem with the title. There was no problems with the conditions, it being stagnant because it was being developed already. Okay. Where does this come into play? And I spoke with Mr. Semraero about this.
Semra.
Semra, sorry. And, and, okay. Well, this is one thing that I am concerned with. Okay? And there, there is a lawsuit that was one, which we spoke about, the Galatin. And, you know, this is, this is something that really bothers me. To have a pilot program, you have to make a redevelopment area. Okay? And I really believe, looking at the pilot program and the way this is all set up, it's basically a redevelopment program isn't for new development, high density residential clustering of housing. Okay? I think it's more of dilapidated buildings. I think it's more of redeveloping of something that is just run down and it should be rebuilt like Main Street or whatever, housing that like, like Opiches that's sitting there going up. That, that's where a redevelopment plan comes in, not a new construction.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you see the financial benefit to the borough of this stuff?
Do I see a lot of, a financial benefit? I think there's a carrot being waved in front of the nose. And yes, there are pros and there are cons. And I have to say that. Do I see it? Yes. But the problem I, I have with this is that the first step, I don't think, was a legal maneuver to go to the pilot.
I understand your concern. And I'll, I'll defer to the attorney in a moment on the legality question. But you see, you see a financial benefit with the math that can help the borough, can-
There's pros and cons to it, John, because the problem I have is a thirty-year deal with schools. And now if we, we, let's, let's get back to, we have another project going across the street with four hundred and fifty-five units. We could take a hundred kids in the school system, so a year. What happens when we exceed the hundred students? We got four fifty-five, one seventy-three. These not, these are not just all one-bedroom units.
You're talking about across the street?
Yeah.
Which is three sixty-something? There's no, there's no, nothing's being built there? I mean, there's nothing-
It's, it is approved. It can be built tomorrow. So we have to look at that as a whole-
That has nothing to do with the pilot on Avalon Bay.
I understand that. I, there's not any school money going towards there, John.
They have a two percent cap.
That's understanding. It's two percent. It's two percent. What happens if we have to put an addition on a school? You're talking millions of dollars. Two percent is nothing. Nothing.
And that's the time you, you-
Well, let me ask you a question. What happens if you have to put an addition on a school today without getting pilot or regular taxation?
We don't have to do it because we don't have to-
No, no, all of us have to pay for it, right?
Yeah, but the taxes rise. Will you hold them at two percent? Our, my taxes go up thirteen percent, they stay at two.
My point to you is-
Okay.
If you had to do an addition to a school, first of all, the population of students is shrinking over the time, right?
Hold it. They stay at two.
Our number of children is shrinking over time, right? So ten years from now, it's going to be less populated schools, not more. We need to reduce our number of schools, not grow them. But let's just say if there was a need for an addition to a school, whether we do this pilot or not, we're, we're all going to have to pay for it.
We're all going to have to pay for it?
Yeah.
Everybody's going to pay for it?
At least now we have-
You're right. Everybody's going to pay for it. But who will pay their fair share and who won't?
Here's, here's the point I'm going to make. If that plan comes in fourteen years, I just showed you a way to get rid of our debt, turn over the entire three hundred thousand dollars the school was supposed to get.
I told you, right, there's pros and cons. And I agree with you. There's pros and there's cons. But you know what? When you look at the new shiny car and it looks great and it's brand new, wow, I want it. It's impulse fine, but guess what? It's an old motor.
First of all, this is not impulse fine.
Well, I, you understand what I'm saying.
It's a bargain or negotiation.
You're getting a carrot waved in front of your nose. You've got to look at the whole big picture on it. And yes, there are some good points on it. I agree. There are some bad points on it.
Let me ask you something.
I sat right here in this meeting and I watched Liddell tell us that Avalon Bay will not be building this. Guess who's building it? Isn't that amazing? So is the man a liar? Yes, he is.
Glenn, how many years ago was that statement made?
That, that statement was made two years ago.
Why are we talking about two years ago?
Because we're talking about thirty years here right now in the future.
It has nothing to do with the decision that Avalon is here.
I understand that. John, please.
Nothing's going to change that.
You have to look at the whole.
There is. Let me ask you something. Your initial, you might see a secret cons, you see a financial benefit possibly, there are pros and cons. Okay, I get that. But your initial comment was, can it have been done? Why was it made a redevelopment in the first place? If this is approved, the next step has to go to the DCA, Department of Consumer Affairs. They have to approve it. If they come back and approve it, many, meeting all the conditions you're conservative on, then you shouldn't have come.
I'm not saying anything because I am here as a citizen. I am not-
You're right to say it.
Well, I'm not going to influence the council in one way. It's up to them. Whatever they want to do, they'll do it. And that's it. A problem I have is I know we're going to do more redevelopment zones in the town. Are we putting a clause in there for no residential? It's going to be commercial industrial use.
This isn't, this isn't zoning. The redevelopment area, zoning, this is a designation. It's still zoned within that area. I mean, one point that was raised is, boy, and I think it's a good point from a planning perspective, why doesn't it incorporate, why isn't it extended? But keep in mind, if you go forward in this direction, this sets the basis for you to go ahead and extend it because it would be contiguous to an expansion or be part of an expansion of the zone. But it's not zoning. It's not zoning. You can still zone within whatever you desire.
Zoning already exists though.
As business and office professional in Union, as a former council is a guy. Main Street zoning exists as in retail, you know, so wholly residential, not performing. So zoning exists. This is just putting a redevelopment overlay on it. It's not changing zoning.
How much, how much do we get, John? I didn't listen in on the conversation. I know that we have a hundred thousand dollars in, or we're getting some credits towards our public. How many credits are we getting towards our public?
I believe it ultimately depends on how, how many users.
What does that work on?
We have, we just, we still should not more fund. That's not, that deposit's not being made until, you know, a certain point of permits being pulled and whatnot. I'm not sure exactly. I believe it has something to do with the number of qualified people who get access to that money.
I think, I think it would come down to how the government body spends that money. You know, if you, for example, a group home, you could get certain credits. But, you know, I would say-
Do you get one COA, what I understand about it is-
Can that one just happen to make up the, the shortfall? I don't have an answer to that.
Okay. Say you put a boiler in somebody's house.
Is that one unit, half a unit?
Is that a one unit? That's always-
I don't know. I can't answer that. We don't know. Is, is it going to make up the full nineteen shortfall, whatever the shortfall is now?
No.
So you still have that hanging over and that- So you still have to hang you over and add. We could still have a builder's remedy lawsuit coming on us again. Where?
Better than those are any court order, so, and we don't, we already have. No, we still have, we still don't have a survey.
No, we don't have.
Even with, even without Avalon Bay's approval of the higher number.
We have it, we have that second rule, go out there. Even without Avalon Bay at its original stance.
So even if Avalon Bay didn't reduce their COA, it's still exposed to builder's remedies, that doesn't change anything. The important thing to realize, the reduction in COA, which I personally have a problem with because I don't think COA is, is an issue because the flux they are on the state of Jersey, number one, and number two, we really don't have the land for it to go. Yes, the biggest piece is Borough Home. The Borough's not gonna sell 38 acres for four thousand, okay? Um, so again, I, I'm not concerned about the reduction. But the reduction actually increases Avalon Bay's revenue, which ultimately gives us more revenue with the pilot. Because he's gonna get more rent for the, the 19 units that are no longer holding houses.
He's paying a flat rate though. I, I understand, he's getting more money but he's paying a flat rate.
Well, I, yeah, but I, I would say, from a legal perspective, the municipality really needs to remain a planner and address your outstanding obligations so you don't get in a situation where you have a builder's remedy and, or you're in a situation where you feel you're on the short side of some of these, these court orders. I, I really, I stress that because.
How did, how did we cover all that?
But the one way to do it is, you need the influx of revenue to pay for those things to get going. You, you really do. I was very surprised when I got started that there really wasn't a planner to address some of the evolving issues that you have. They do need it, and it's, it, it, the one thing, I think somewhere it was discussed, that would be a way, this would be a way to have some of the resources to get, to get a plan in place. We already do that. If you're gonna go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone else wish to speak?
Ladies and gentlemen, William Raff, Aprilnden Lay. I had not intended to make any personal comments this evening at all based on what I'm hearing and my last comments at our public hearing. But there were some comments just made, and I'm speaking to you now as a member of the planning, just to, just to clarify some issues that perhaps we just missed. If you recall, in April, you sent by resolution to the, to the planning board, and we won't have to enumerate those on, you know, notings vote to do that except for the recruitment. Um, you sent the resolution to the planning board to ask us to do a feasibility study, on, on a redevelopment area for a specific lot and lot where Avalon Bay happens to sit after they recite. We hired Burgess to do that. The planning board had a public hearing in regard to that. Uh, we had significant discussion, all right, among ourselves at our public meeting, all right, of, of the planning board, where we discussed the feasibility study that was done for us, for us as a borough, by Burgess Associates. We took it apart, as some of you that may have been there well, well know. We looked at the local, the local redevelopment and housing law, and we studied that extensively to make sure that what we were going to recommend to you folks was, in our own minds, we could, we could stand, we could stand behind it and we, and we believed it. Because some of the things that were just said, all right, yeah, we, we picked those points out, all right? And there were numerous of them in, in the law. We picked them up and we picked them apart. How does, how does this site meet this one? How does the site meet that? And we put in our motion back to you, when we approved the feasibility study, all right? We put, and we enumerated those. You've seen those. You've seen the reasons why we picked out from the local housing redevelopment law, all right? The reason why we felt that this site was a good site and reasonable that you, by ordinance, declared it a redevelopment area. You agreed with us, all right? You sent it back to us by resolution again. And once again, except for the recusal, everyone was in favor of it, all right? And that's, that's just, that's beside the point, that, that, that's just. We sent it back to us because in the process, the next step in the process was to do a redevelopment plan, all right? The planning board is the group in town that does that and needs to do that. Once again, we hired Burgess, as we well know, because you funded it. You gave us the funds to do it. We hired Burgess to do the redevelopment plan. They did a redevelopment plan, extensive one. Once again, the planning board held a public hearing, all right? The public had the option to come up and provide whatever comments they wished to before we either adopted or didn't adopt that particular redevelopment plan. So all that took place. All right, once again, we looked at the redevelopment plan. Internal discussion at a public meeting of the planning board. We picked the redevelopment plan apart, all right? Looked at all the pros and cons of it, all right? And in the final analysis, and you could see it in, in the, in the motion that we sent back to you folks, that yes, we approved the redevelopment plan that was done. We made it very, very, very stringent in the motion that we sent back as to how we wanted this to happen, all right? And, and what criteria the developer would have to follow, all right? And, and you know all that because you've seen that, we sent it back to you. So the planning board at that juncture did what you asked us to do. We looked at the feasibility, we looked at, we decided, yeah, it, it could meet, by the way. It just wasn't blame people making that decision. We had attorneys, all right, we had professional consultants, we had our planning board engineer, all giving us input as to that. We didn't take these things out of, out of thin air, all right? So we sent it back to you folks, all right? And at that, at that juncture, it was up to you guys to say, all right, what do I wanna do with this? But you wouldn't have sent it to us in the first place if you didn't have in mind that you're going for a pilot program. That's why you sent it to us. On, on April, when you sent us that resolution, all right? You had to know, if, if we, if we approved this, you were going for a pilot program, all right? And you know that and I know that. So that was the, that was the intent. Everyone that voted for it, everyone that voted for it knew that's where you were going. In any case, you developed, you developed a, a, a pilot program. We gave you the authority, not that you need to, I don't need to say that. We gave you the ability because we classified it as a redevelopment area. You approved it as a redevelopment area. And once you had that, you had the ability to go and negotiate with the developer for all the things that a redevelopment area gives you. And one of those things is a pilot program. Now, yeah, there could be some disagreement with numbers here and there. But the bottom line is, you came up with a, you came up with a pilot program. You all did, you're all a member of the, of our governing body. I, I don't care who took the lead, or who didn't take the lead. Everyone had the ability to have input to, all right? You came up with, you came up with a very reasonable pilot program, all right? I commented on it last time, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that again.
I thought it was good, first of all, all right?
Could you disagree with the numbers?
Sure.
Somebody could disagree with the number here, or number there, or the concept here. But we all agreed to the concept and the plan when we started the process. Look, the only reason I wanted to make these comments, folks, is because there were some comments made just a few moments ago as to the accuracy of, of what we all did and whether it's challengeable in court. But I can't say whether it is or it isn't. All I can tell you is that from a planning board perspective, we had, we played it by the book, knowing, knowing that some of these issues very well could wind up in court, perhaps. And so we tried to guard, protect us and protect you folks and to protect the borough in making sure that what we did, number one, we truly believed in, and not, and number two, met all the requirements of the state statute. So no one could shoot holes in it. That was the approach that we took. Um, and what you do now is your, is your decision, all right? You're, you're, you're up there, you're elected individuals, you guys have to make the decision. We did what you asked us to do. And I just wanted to clarify once again that what we did was, was according to the state, state statute, was with professional opinion, with public hearings. And, and I think that what we as a planning board did, um, supported what you asked us to do in the beginning. You guys gotta make the decision. The only other comment I make, and once again, I'll step back from my planning board role and, and, and go and put my personal head on it. Um, and I was just commenting to another good friend of mine that 30 years ago, all right? He and I sat on the governing body in the Bergen School, while there were five or 600 people out there protesting something that we were just about to vote on, all right? So he and I know to a large extent what's going through your minds and what are, what are the emotions that you're facing right now. No one made that decision for you. No one made the decision for he and I at that point. But those are the things that, that you do, you know? Good luck, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, if I, if I may just say, Mr. Raff just explained in, in the land use world, that's a textbook explanation as to what happened and occurred. And I think at the last meeting, I touched upon it when I was asked questions about the, the area need of redevelopment. And unlike some of the cases that were mentioned in this particular matter, all the proper corners were turned squarely. And he's absolutely right. You had a professional planner prepare a report, which was scrutinized and reviewed and adopted, you know, by the planning board and sent to everybody. And in the cases that cited, there wasn't a planner's report, it was just an opinion, uh, without any report. And it's just a world of a difference. And I think, I could say from a legal perspective, if you don't wanna go forward with this tonight, it's a policy decision. It's not because there's something, there's an illegality as far as how you adopted, uh, this area and this redevelopment plan. That, that shouldn't sway you because everything was done appropriately. And actually, so many times, you see municipalities, you know, that are charged with various land use proceedings, just sort of rubber stamp things. And that's how problems start. It's not what happened here. Everything was done in an appropriate manner. So if you don't wanna do this, it's a policy decision. There is, there are no legal concerns from my perspective when you have a licensed professional planner issue a report, stand to the report, and it has been scrutinized and voted on by Land Use Board, the governing body, attorneys, engineers, as he mentioned, and a professional planner who puts his license on the line, and it hasn't been challenged. So I think that's a very good point to, to make for the record.
Anyone else wish to speak?
James Pruch, any place? I'd like to thank Mr. Raff because I was gonna start out with a little planning work view, but he gave it much more eloquently than I ever could. But on personal note, um, I believe the pilot programs, the pros are far outweighed the cons. The benefits of the town are just, are just too great for, for the possible. And that's from the positives we can see. The negatives, well, there are a whole lot of what-ifs. Well, I've been coming to these meetings now for about 30 years. I've seen all the faces change here. There's always a lot of what-ifs, what-ifs, what-ifs. A lot of times, nothing ever happens and the bus left the port. The goal left the port, and we missed it. Time and time again. Don't miss it again. All right, we said before, there's some 2,200 tax-paying properties in Bloomingdale. For years, all we've heard are the fight for the tax dollar, fight for the tax dollar. Well, don't come to the town, it's the school. Don't come to the town, it's the town here. Don't go to the county, it's the town. Well, I look at it this way tonight, two very important things that I say. 2,200 tax-paying towns. 2,199 for the county and the school, one for the town. We got it that way. You keep one, give them the rest. Okay, and another point, uh, Ms. Alfield said, how would you like to be the council people to settle? Future councils with 30 years of payments? How would you also like to be the council, then when you leave here, say you can pay down the town's entire debt in 10 years? So three councils from now will be none, or almost none. I think that's a whole lot better than the possibility of what could happen 30 years from now. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Cassine, oh, yes, sir.
Perry Murrah, hi, Cherry Road. The pilot law, as I understand it, allows you to, well, number one, uh, part of this plan is, there's a backup clause that you'll get a certain, uh, it'll eventually level out at 12% of the gross rents. Is that part of the plan?
No.
Oh, okay, it's just a fixed 550, that's it?
No, it's 550 plus 2% each year. And also, the 12% is, I believe, is if the profits from the developer exceed 12%, the borough gets a share of any excess profits in addition to the 550 and the 2% at the waiver of the municipal services.
It's, so it's a percentage of his net income? Or his gross income?
It's a flat fee, but it comes to, um, I believe, an excess of 15% of their gross income. Start, 15 is actually the limit. The way it's structured, it can't exceed the state limit of 15%. Well, of course, we disagree. I believe I calculated out to close 17% potentially as far as what the actual return would be.
Well, he's gonna gross 4 million, right? So 15% of that would be 600,000. So.
Sixteen.
Pardon?
We're getting 550 plus, we're not paying any fees. And if you guesstimate it at a consortium of 60,000, it's all the average, sixteen.
My question was, uh, you're gonna have to know what, how his books are written.
Yes, yes, this has been audited, uh, in of all receipts, the red ones.
In other words, uh, all the leases are gonna be audited?
Yes.
By whom, the assessor?
Being independent accountants, that's what I'm trying to get at, upward into the on hand and base.
So somebody's gonna have to see his leases?
Yes.
Which is the base of his.
Yes.
Now, I was looking at this, I'm a layman, but, uh, I was looking at this, uh, law, the pilot law, the, uh, exemption from, uh, long-term exemption from paying them the taxes, I think it's called, something like that. And there's a clause in there, or an option that the pilot could be, uh, you could, uh, qualify for pilot plan if you gave him a 20% discount of his normal taxation. Do you agree with that?
Maybe an option, but that's not, that's not what's happening here.
I understand that. But why was that option not considered?
In other words.
You're gonna give him less than.
You're giving him less than 15%? If you, if anyone, what number you use for the pilot law? You're giving him somewhere between 12 and 15%.
Yeah, but.
Why wouldn't you give him 20?
Yes.
You'd get less money?
No, I'm saying, if you take normal taxation, the law allows for you to qualify for, to get all of that money from the Board of Education. For it to be a pilot plan, all you had to give him was, uh, a 20% discount off his normal taxation. In other words, if he was like a normal, anybody, you know, you went up to Joe Lo and said, in your house, uh, in order for us to get all of your tax money here instead of going to the Board of Education and to the county. Here and separate, go to the Board of Education and to the county. What would be your twenty percent discount of your taxes?
I think I know where you're going with this. And pretty soon, you're going to come back with that you believe, better than any taxes I serve, that better than a state-qualified tax assessor that gave us the numbers, that you believe the taxes should be nine hundred thousand.
Well, I made that...
Stop. It's not nine hundred thousand, it's seven hundred thousand. The man that has the certificate to do this job has told us that. I'm not making it up, he's not making it up, no one up here is making numbers up. If it was nine hundred thousand, we wouldn't negotiate it off of that number. We wouldn't settle for five-fifty, we would have got a lot more, we would have got seven-fifty. But it's not nine hundred. So, don't go there.
And I would compare aptus to aptus, though. If we're just looking at pilot, in all other communities that I'm familiar with, in Avalon Bank, a pilot was a ten percent pilot, straight up, period, no increase. So, in this case, what we would present to you, if we were negotiating and gave up right from the beginning, they offered us the same thing. They offered us ten percent, which would have meant two-hundred thousand dollars a year for the borough as opposed to five-fifty a year and a two percent increase and the waiver of municipal services. So, we would have lost three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year for thirty years. If another governing body came in and said, ten percent's great, we're still making our work on the local level, then we would have. But ten percent is what I saw in other municipalities and what's been going great in this economy. And yet, here, we're talking about something near seventeen percent. So, that's really what it comes to. And even if you don't totally agree with the numbers, it's still head and shoulders above what we were offered. It doesn't even have to do with anything more than ten percent versus seventeen percent. Everybody else, they're negotiating at ten percent. Some, I think they gave, one example we looked at, was at twelve. So, as far as, can I try to bring the very best deal back? I think, yes, you really are, head and shoulders, like debts in other communities.
Was Aberdeen, was that discussed?
I don't recall, I don't recall if they were there.
I know they, I think their pilot plan is ten years old. And an interesting thing about Aberdeen, maybe an indication that they weren't happy with the plan, originally, their land assessment was four million. Now, in order to compensate and get at least some money for their Board of Education, their land assessment's gone up to twelve million. They can't, you know, they're locked in to the pilot plan, but at least they're working around the back door to get some money out of that project, out of some kind of frustration. Now, Mr. Conklin, I think, is right on the nose. For example, Windhurst has an Avalon project. Their assessment per apartment is a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars per apartment. If you had, if you assessed Avalon on Union Avenue for a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, you'd be over thirty-million-dollar assessment. You're walking away from a huge assessment. You're walking away from nine hundred, you know, you anticipate my point of view. You're walking away from a huge amount of money each year for the town, for the homeowners. You know, and that, the loss by taking this lousy little five-fifty, the loss to the homeowners in here, you know, you're looking at gift worths in the math.
Mr. Green, I guess we're right. I wish it was, forget nine hundred thousand, I wish it was twelve million dollars a year. But it's not. The man that does the math, right, and we challenged him, we challenged him every which way, how do you know? And he went through the math and supported it, and he told us it's seven hundred thousand. That's it.
These units' rents, existing rents of all us low-income apartments.
It's usually average rent that these units are going to be, which is why I can't compare to Windhurst Avalon. Average rents include, they're going to be eighteen fifty a month. The Windhurst units are larger square footage and are averaging twenty-four to twenty-six hundred a month in Windhurst. So, you can't do a comparison of the rents in Windhurst where we checked, fifteen hundred was the starting rate, in fact, to thirty-four hundred a month in Windhurst. If we could put those numbers in our formula, we'd write thirty-four hundred dollars a month. It's just not...
Are you saying the average rent on Union Avenue will be eighteen hundred or...
Eighteen twenty.
Yeah. And what's his starting rate? What's the lowest rent?
The average included the seven mile rural.
I mean, forget Avalon Mall rural, I mean, it's the...
That's the average, no. That's an average, you'd have to... It would be sixteen hundred, twenty-two hundred, right?
Yeah, but still, it goes out to four million a year, right? For the whole package.
So, if you do the math that way, it comes out to nineteen fifty. But the difference between eighteen twenty and nineteen fifty are other things, right, that are gross revenue, like lending machines, whatever he's got out there, other fees that he collies.
Percentage of...
He has a gym in there, he has, I don't know what he's charging for, but the average rental, which is what the S.S. value is going to be based on.
Well, when is the actual firm, in other words, normally, I mean, how can you assess the property right now? It has to be up and running, right, before the assessor goes in and gives the final assessment, isn't that correct? This is just a guesstimate by the assessor, this nineteen...
It's based on revenue. It's whether it's built or not, we can anticipate the revenue, the units are going to...
Mr. Liddell believes his assessment's going to come in, his taxes are going to be about six-twenty. And he's going to fight us to it every year, every single year, to make sure he doesn't pay a penny over that six-twenty. We could vote this down and go down that path and this other one, a hundred thousand is going to get eighty thousand.
With a pilot, there'd never be an appeal. That's the other thing.
There is no appeal. Never can be a tax appeal under the pilot.
We have a commercial piece of property in the borough, I've been at Borough Administrator here for seven years, they have contested those taxes seven years in a row, and they were sizing. It's a letting institution, I'll leave it at that. But what we're saying this is, that they can't contest those taxes, so it must be a big deal. The hardest thing to be the borough administrator is to strike a rate of your town taxes and then be appealed backwards. Because I'm thinking that we have nine-point-five million dollars, and I look at that cookie jar and I shake it and go, oh my God, there's not enough money in there. So, finding ways to prevent these appeals, for me, is actually job one. That's why I'm interested in living the rebound, finishing the tax maps, and getting this town and these people back in the mindset that we need to move forward and settle these infrastructure issues and these things. Because without funding, I don't know how we're going to make 2013 work. Because we did some creative ways to make 2012 work without the assistance of our order. So, I listen to you folks challenge this, I get complete debate, but at the end of the day, what are your options? Because I hear this proposal and then I hear nothing. Correct? So, at the end of the day, someone needs to tell me how we're going to fund this and make this work in 2013.
Well, my advice is, you know, to give him, if you give him a twenty percent discount, you're allowed to qualify for a pilot off normal taxation.
You were saying, normal taxation. Whenever you want to think, let me say that.
Well, normal taxation will be determined by how well he does. He may be lousy down there, but he may have a huge gross rental.
But at the end of the day, he's going to pay five-fifty and for thirty years, sixty percent increase, going to pay two percent for thirty years. How many guarantees do you have going forward in this world?
Well...
Mr. Green, are you owing a apartment bill?
Well, that's...
I understand, but you rent, but you rent units? If he's able to get nineteen hundred dollars a unit, do you think he can help your rentals? Is that going to benefit you?
Sure, sure. It raises the ceiling. I mean, it's helpful for me, but what I'm worried about is the town's getting, isn't getting the benefit. You're letting off...
Getting four times the benefit.
Four times the benefit on the normal taxation.
Now, are you saying we're not getting the benefit? We are getting four times the benefit.
And the other interesting...
Which is going to come back to you.
You made a point earlier, that normal taxation is based on his net, his net revenue, okay? And if he had a bad year, let's say he built and couldn't rent half of them, then all the numbers for projecting his normal taxes will be so skewed and half will be showing you. Under the pilot, okay, whether he rents half or none or one, we're getting five-fifty. So, regardless of the economic...
All the other apartment houses in town take twenty percent or the twenty-five percent of gross.
Sir, I think we went through this the last time we did. There was no pilots available.
You're letting them bank twelve percent of gross. You know, what's five-fifty out of four million?
I know, he's paying seventeen percent of gross.
Five-fifty is a...
Plus the waiver of services. Forget the waiver of the municipal services. Plus the two percent. Plus the two percent. Fifteen to seventeen percent.
Well, okay, seventeen. You're still waterfall village, just paying you twenty to twenty-five percent.
The last time that gentleman was there, the sixty-four dollar question at the end of my tongue that I was going to ask, if we offered him the pilot today, would he take it? He would have jumped on that chair and said, amen or not? Because anybody that's in business would take that deal. The sour grape seems to be that I can't provide that service stuff prior to, because it wasn't in place. Nobody can fix the past, we can only fix the future.
I think Councilman said, that Councilman, as I said last time you were here, Mr. Green, if you wanted to give twenty million dollars asset value in development, everyone will give you seventeen percent real value. And you take seventeen percent in thirty seconds.
Well, that speaks to the fact that you're giving him a big break. You're thinking, you know, if you gave him normal taxation...
Giving county money on the table, that's it.
Sir, if they're going to give you a big break, that's easier. Do you understand that? One-point-two million of our nine-point-seven million dollar budget is going to pay down debt. If we can eliminate debt, I just showed you, whether I apply fifty percent of it, whether that number grows, it's, it's a dummy proof. If we pass the ordinance tonight, that we're going to spend all of this money, pay down debt, and pass it back to you, it's dummy proof. Okay? It's not a safe...
You're walking away from a guarantee, twenty to twenty-five percent of his gross compared with fifteen to seventeen percent of his gross.
If his business doesn't take off, and he contests his taxes, which he will, and he does it every year, how much farther will he down that road?
Well, I don't think he'll get below, below...
But see, there's no guarantee.
He won't get below twenty percent of his gross down at the tax court in Trent. You know, you're walking away from a lot of money for the homeowners. Anyway, I appreciate that I've had my voice, my input. Did you read the boxer report?
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
Anyone else we should speak? See no one, motion closed.
So...
All fair. Before we, as for motion, is there any council person, you said you wanted to vote on the public quote?
I just want to say something, not particularly to the public. It's, I feel like I've been through a three-credit course and this is the final, but I want to tell you all, I didn't come to my decision very lightly, and I did the homework required for this course, and that's what I'm going to present.
Any motion to a down lord in sixteen, two thousand and twelve?
So...
Second, any further discussion on that motion?
I would love to hear if anyone's going to vote this down. And just the facts that we presented numerous times, how this is going to benefit every single one of us? And since you're going to take that benefit away by voting it down, then explain to me how am I going to get that money back? Or explain to me, give me the course, give me the crash course that you just took for the last whatever number. Give me more than just, I'm not talking about...
Plus, again, approved by auditor, two auditors, a planner, our planning board, and attorney, you know, so that's why we have those people here to guide us in making the right decisions and how the math speaks for itself.
I did hear from people who said that this was recommended by the auditors, recommended, recommended. And that isn't the way I understood it. When I sat with our auditor, he said, these are my suggestions. When I read his report that we asked for, I didn't see that this as a recommendation for this program. I did hear our attorney, I did hear our attorney recommend it. I believe with that. I went to the, to the school board meeting, and yes, they had an auditor there who spoke in very general terms about pilots, and he qualified his statement saying he had never looked at this one. So, I cannot take that really as his recommendation.
But you said pilot programs are waiting for towns. Did he or did he not?
He said he never looked at this one, so I don't...
It's printed, it's in writing. You're going to deny what was said?
I have a lot of comments. Do you want my first?
No, we're in a council committee. No, we're in public comment, we're asking some comments. I'm sorry, we're in, discussion on the motion. No, no, we're in discussion on the motion and asking you, based on the, you know, importance of that I was discussing. Just speak to it.
Well, I put a lot of thought and effort into reviewing this. So, we do the vote, the Avalon Bank.
And you know what kind of benefit we will get over thirty years? Because I called you to offer you what you missed, that you will study it on your own. So, what is our benefit over thirty years?
Are we voting?
Did you study it?
Are we voting?
We are going to vote, absolutely.
She can't answer.
What you just said, that you studied it, you understand it. Do you understand it? And if you did, we'll answer the questions. What is our benefit over thirty years? I just put it up on the board, how we can pay off our debt. Did you understand that?
You don't have to answer anything, but I think you owe your colleagues and the public as an elected official, an explanation on how you're going to vote and why you're going to vote that way. Councilman?
Are we voting?
I asked you a question.
Are we voting?
We will vote on the moment.
Okay. When we vote, you're weighed.
We will explain your answer.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
First of all, I want to go back to the beginning and to tell everyone that a lot of hard work was put into this by a lot of people, and I totally respect that, but I don't think you can come to a decision until you've looked at all the facts. I hope you'll pardon me because I'm going to read what I have to say because I don't want to miss any of it. I have listened to the public, read correspondence, listened to the pilot presentation, and read this financial agreement. The bottom line for me is the tax... Number one, the Office of the State Controller issued a highlight report on pilot programs saying that New Jersey Municipal Tax Abatement Program is pulling critical funding away from school districts and leading taxpayers to pick up the costs. This report also says these laws exempt developers from paying property taxes in order to encourage development that otherwise might not have taken place. This development was well on the way and court ordered, therefore, does not meet this criteria. Number two, the financial agreement we would enter into states, that the project will facilitate the revitalization and productive reuse of land currently in a lighted state the revitalization and productive reuse of land currently in a blighted, stagnant, unproductive, and fallow condition. I don't feel this statement described this land, and I cannot agree with that statement. Number three, our mayor states that we need to entice development, and this is an incentive for a developer to develop. This is an undeveloped parcel on a county road with prime access to Route 287. They sued to develop. No enticement necessary. He also stated, "Remember, the borough can offset any additional costs that the Board of Ed may see from a project." And where would the borough get that money from? Number four, I do not believe we would ever see this money coming to the borough, will ever be paying down our debt. There will always be an emergency, there will always be more money to spend as you're paying this down. An ordinance can always be changed. These are all red flags to me. This development, in my opinion, does not meet the needs of our taxpayers. It seems the presentations that I've seen are so narrow-mindedly focused on the borough to borough, your 21% of taxes. It's not focused on us as taxpayers. We pay 100% of taxes. And I do believe that Bloomingdale would benefit not from giving this developer these, this extra income. Then there is the financial aspect. When the schools lose, the taxpayer loses. The developer who filed with the F C for a $30 million development gets a $19 million assessment for 30 years with only 2% increase, and we lose. When would a taxpayer get no increase in your assessment in 30 years? When did we ever get only a 2% increase? If our schools don't presently need this tax money in their budget, then it should come to the borough. We need to entice people to buy homes in Bloomingdale because of education. If the county doesn't get enough money, or the schools don't get enough money, it will be the taxpayer who will eventually pay. In the boxer report, it states the problem with the tax, with the county not getting money, and it spells that out very clearly. This developer needs no enticing, not to say that other areas would bring in manufacturing and would have a blighted area might not qualify for a pilot program. We give him $4 million benefit at the expense of the taxpayers. And I've heard these words many times, "It's a gamble, and it's risky." I don't want to take that gamble. I think it is too risky for us as, as taxpayers, paying 100% of taxes. I think we should let the court order development pay their fair share of these taxes. My vote is no.
Ms. Shortman, you kept mentioning this...
I'm not gonna end that debate with you.
I'm not debating, I'm asking...
I'm not answering any questions. I'm not debating. I have put in more time on this, I have done my best, it's not a political decision.
Absolutely.
I have listened exactly, and I'm not answering any more questions.
You don't have to respond to him, but he can make his statements here.
Well, here's, here's my concern, right? The same lady that just sat here and basically told the kids that for the last seven years got a day in the half, that I'm gonna table it, essentially killed it, killed the whole idea. Now is concerned about the children.
Yeah, she's...
And she says, "It's not political."
It's not a Halloween party.
Let me, let me just, let me just say that at the federal level, we all see it, right? The Congress is at a standstill. They can't, they can't get anything passed. Why? Because they know if they go in and support the president and what he wants to get done, he's gonna get reelected. So every sitting president on their first term is gonna get beat down. This man here, they know, if they pass this and they give us the ability to fix things, he may have a shot at it again. There's someone here that lost to him, lost to me, that wants to run again. So this is their plan, right? To basically screw all of us out of these savings that's possible through this. Why? Because they wanna run again. They wanna stand there and say, "What did he do for you in four years that he sat there?" That's the dirty politics of what is going on. It's a terrible attitude.
Too many times.
It is disgusting.
It is absolutely disgusting that you could come up with statements like that to people who have listened and worked hard. It has nothing to do with anybody else but this program and the taxpayers who will eventually have to pay, and pay big time. 30 years is too risky, it's too long a time. Let's get some money.
Why did you put us through five hours of...
When the summer number goes up?
You put us through five hours of presentation on the 6th. You canceled meetings.
Because I wanted to make an informed decision.
And now that you're here...
I was away on vacation.
You know what, the letter in the paper said it all. We knew we were gonna get tonight. Because it's not your vote.
You know, just, yeah, we're counting your comments, and, uh, we're just, comments. You mentioned that you don't feel qualifies under, uh, to be a redevelopment area or a pilot because of the blighted, which you know, all the, all the things you said about why you don't feel. I think Mr. Graff stated so eloquently that the process we went through proved and would be upheld as does qualify. And you, again, I know against all the advice we've received, you don't see it.
Do you know, I disagree with it, gentlemen. I do disagree with it, and I wanna say this financial agreement that we have to vote on, that we are going to accept a financial agreement that I doubt, I had to come up here and specifically ask to see that financial agreement, and it's in this book tonight. Tonight, it's in this book.
That was even to the day of the Board of...
I told you, I didn't have email.
That was even to three weeks ago. Um, the other point is education. I did that part, I stated earlier, the Board of Ed is not gonna see 400,000 of new money under regular taxes, because they have a cap. They have a cap, okay? Where is their cap? What can they...
14.
No, I know, what is the dollar now within their cap that they can go up?
It's 14 million percent of that.
It's some, it's outside cap.
And, and health benefits as well.
So they can, they can vote 250,000 annually, Councilwoman, which is just gonna be their health insurance, their, their... So this money's not going to education. It's not gonna, you know, like I said, there is no cap, 400,000 went to the school, to edit the school system. I, I have trouble supporting the pilot, that's not the case. I don't know why that part was being insisted. So next year, we have regular taxes, and Rose will be getting 116,000, now have to plow, sew, pickle to garbage, or pay for that, whatever, whatever they want. We are gonna be just losing a little bit of money. Excuse me, please.
Like I said, I put a lot of effort, I put more into this, but my answer is no.
We knew that.
Council, Councilwoman Shortman?
Yeah, I'm gonna do something that's really unorthodox there. I've been talking about the pilot and how good it is, and why we absolutely must do this, but if I just vote yes for it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, I don't believe I have the ability to bring it back up again. And I wanna have the shot of one last fight for, for our town. So I'm gonna vote it down with the majority in order to be able to bring it back up and pass it if we can go have that conversation with the developer. So my vote is no.
I'm gonna be assisted.
I don't know where he is. Is he?
13F, introduction of resolution 2012-9 point...
Great.
This is just a resolution for inactive license, it's a pocket license, and there's a special ruling which permits the license holder to continue to have the inactive license status, so it's not lost, to the state. So by approving the resolution, you're encouraging the state, uh, keeping the license active. The state's decision to like, come out.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Somebody second?
Yeah, I'm in the market. Need a roll call?
Councilman Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yasi?
I'm sorry, what was the topic?
This is for the, 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 the,[1373.83]
It's two, the bills list is two weeks old. Two weeks old.
Well, I was on the mission. I did not see it till I... I had no computer. I don't know if it was on the computer.
What's your other question?
What's the next one?
My next one, I want to make a statement about the B&amp;B Catering, the Clean Communities Grant for that day. I really am trying to work as a team here. But I had a conversation with the mayor during our spring cleanup that we had used B&amp;B Catering, who is my personal at-home caterer and my friend. I have no problem using this company. But we had then agreed that when we did the Clean Communities Grant cleanup, that we would use a local person. And that didn't happen. We went right back to B&amp;B Deli, and I just want to say that I am very upset about it.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
B&amp;B Deli, Billy Barrett, who lives in this town, taxpayer in this town, who owned a deli at one point in this town, serves us very greatly with BYR youth workers, they see coaches. He participates in everything in his town.
Senior colleagues.
Does nothing. Right, anytime you call him, he goes out and he gives us a great deal. He's a longtime resident. So it is, we are dealing with a resident.
Yes.
Parents were here.
I dealt with them, and I know Bill. I said he's my personal caterer, and I don't disagree that he should get a piece of our business. But when Lucy and Ethel, which is across the street from the venue, are town residents and did a great job last year, I thought we had an agreement to use them also.
They live there?
Yes. They live here and they have a business there.
One of them, one of the owners, but one of the owners. And I have breakfast here.
So why not, why not share it? You know, that business in town.
Then they're sure you can run River Cleanup, and then we won't have this problem.
We'll have a master.
I will.
Let's do that. Let's do that. So then it is a sharing, right? If Lucy and Ethel got it last year, you want to get it again this year, that's a share.
No, we have more than one catering event. Bill got the one in the spring.
First of all, you don't have a discussion publicly, it's just a absolute waste of time. So let's just...
No, I don't think it's a waste of time.
You actually went in there and apologized to Lucy and Ethel, it was crazy. So why don't you go apologize to Walkers, Wilks, Food World, Quick Mark, Bellicera, do you need to use any ridiculous?
Well, we ought to start using local people, especially when they have...
John, I have coffee there every morning. Just the problem I have with it is, is that the people that are on the River Cleanup are using their baths. That's all.
Yes.
And I...
But you know what, the next year you run River Cleanup, right?
No, I won't. I won't.
You're wasting your time, right?
I'm just telling you.
You take this conversation...
Then don't use your bathroom, John.
I don't use the bathroom.
Then nobody should use their bathroom.
I use the bathroom first.
Okay.
Page...
He's more than willing to go.
Page three. Why, I don't quite understand why we buy mums from the Boy Scouts. Can't we buy them directly and save money?
Probably, but it's the Boy Scouts. Helping the Boy Scouts raise money.
She's serious. Sure, she gave them a lot of money.
Actually, I think she even loaned off. Even their Boy Scouts.
My other question is on page four. Why are we paying the DJ for this Saturday when this Saturday isn't even...
We have the check we put in my mailbox and I have a hole that's two kids' year on Saturday. Check's on issued till after you pay the bills.
What happens if it rains and...
Then I hold the check till October 20. The rain date is Friday.
What happens if it rains?
Then I void the check. Are you implying the DJ will get paid for not performing service?
Well, sometimes you have to pay that. Do you have a honest question?
Excuse me, Councilwoman?
Excuse me, change your tone, Mr. Speaker.
No, I just...
Please change your tone.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I don't believe we should be paying, put this on the bills list until after Friday, because it could rain both Saturday and Sunday.
Well, the rain date's not Sunday. The rain date's October 20. And he will not get paid unless the event happens, and I will hold the check.
But you don't have to be snippy, John.
Just a comment.
You're right, Councilwoman.
I know, I'm wrong.
Yeah, and so well-prepared. Anything else?
That's it.
I am prepared.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Tom.
Yes. Adoption Resolution 212 9.5, approval of inter-local agreement for registrar services in West Milford. This is an agreement we've had in place for many, many years where our... We share our registrar, who was in town, is in town for the...
And the president's retired and fulfilled several...
Retired fills a role for us. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council.
I'll give the last...
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Conklin?
Yes.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes. And that was asked, actually.
Excuse me? Authorization to repair the traffic light. The, Ted mentioned earlier, the circuit is broken for the red light to turn at 3:00 hours of morning. Do we have an estimate?
We have a repair, and I have an estimate. And unfortunately, I thought it was in the books, so I didn't...
This was added after the last discussion. So regardless, has it been repaired?
The, I have an estimate for it, and we also have the service code, but we didn't function again.
So we have to authorize this to repair.
Can we do this now?
The lights are responsible.
Well, I thought it was that we did something of agreement with Morris County.
Morris County, please, go along with...
Let's go to Morris County.
Need a motion to authorize repair of the traffic light.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Need a roll call.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Conklin?
Yes.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
I don't need, I don't need consent from the council. I am appointing Elaine Petrowski, who's currently alternate to sit in the mayor's rep seat on the planning board, just for your records. We now have a vacancy in that alternate seat, which I hope to fill shortly. Need authorization to request formal proposals for redevelopment plans on Union and Main Street. Again, we're just authorizing Ted to go get prices from a few planners to price the Main Street, and then get the horse from the development. So moved, we forward. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Need a roll call.
Councilwoman Shortman?
I'm going to abstain. I'd rather have seen this on work session, this discussion, as to what it entails, and if there's any cost involved.
It's a request. A request, we hold formal proposals, we get the cost. We're going to find out all you just asked for by doing this action. So an abstention. Could you continue, please?
I changed to yes, then.
Okay.
With that explanation.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Conklin?
Yes.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
Councilman Schiffman?
No. Authorization to purchase B&amp;B County's of harvesting for Police Department. Motion.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Is this amount in the budget?
Yeah, it's in, it's in Chief Burrow's budget.
Schiffman and Demotta, Schiffman and...
No certification of funds?
No, it's 1,500, he has it.
Roll call.
70,000.
Okay, that's the provision we need. Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conklin?
Yes.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Review best practices and corrective action plan is submitted by the, well, corrective active plan was submitted by the auditor. So first, I think we should submit, we all received that months ago. We just need to... While we're doing a resolution, we have to perform actions. We just have to acknowledge and we understand. So do we take formal action?
Corrective action plan is actually signed by the best practices, I think.
Well, I get to that, I think they're two separate matters.
Yeah.
So the corrective acting plan, which you've all received from the auditor, are things after they audited that they want us to correct, which finance will deal with, very minor. So we, I just need a motion. What I want to do is motion approving the corrective action plan submitted by the auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Conklin? Councilman Conklin?
So just approving what Dieter said we need to fix next year. It's for this.
Yeah, yes.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
The next item is review the best practices. Now, we have to file our best practices by Friday. Our CFO was to prepare this, that hasn't been done. Our CFO resigned. So, the council has nothing to review, but at the same time we need it done. So Ted, you're going to find us a CFO between now and Friday to prepare this question?
What?
Because that is your goal. My goal for you.
What I think we should do is give the council to authorize the borough administrator to have the authority to pick a CFO on an interim basis.
To prepare this document by Friday.
To prepare this document, because I have to have one of them sign off.
You and Sherry can complete it.
I can compile a really good portion of it, but a CFO has to sign the document or please, my case to get an extension, but you run the risk of...
We lose our state aid.
And that would not be advisable, so the council's going to have to put their trust that I can get this done and...
Well, here's the, here's the, the motion allows Ted to, to, no, just to make sure our best practice is completed by Friday.
So moved.
Right, but I gotta make...
Doesn't matter what you have to do.
Okay.
Whatever it is to get that job done, it entails authorization.
Whatever I gotta do, and then hiring a circus clown, we gotta do.
Authorizing Ted to complete our best practice review by Friday.
By retaining the services that we...
All right, whatever you have to do.
Okay.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I would prefer...
I'm sorry. Wait, okay, thank you, Mark. I'm sorry, Councilwoman?
I would like to, uh, try and get an extension would be my preference rather than do this, because I've seen, I've seen the other best practices, and I don't want to go into what I don't like about it, but, uh, I don't know. Where we haven't liked.
Thousands of dollars.
I know, I know. But if we asked for an extension and they said, "Fine", we turned...
His key is gone. He sent a messenger, he didn't even come.
Yeah, I think, I think this is an executive session, I guess.
Best practice is not. We need to file by Friday.
Talking about the CFO is.
Right, okay. But we need to file by Friday. You will lose your state aid. You don't have time to even ask for an extension. The CFO, the CFO that the majority hired was here for six weeks, did not prepare, resigned. We need, we're in a jam. You gotta get it done. Motion is authorized Ted to get it done by Friday. I have to do this.
Do we have a motion to reject it?
Let's go, motion. Roll call.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
I know we're supposed to have this in by Friday, but I wish we could be... I wish we could go to closed session on this.
This is, this is not a closed session on best practices. It's not. It's not. The motion is to have Ted get it done by Friday, so we don't lose our state aid.
I'd like to know where you're gonna hire.
Whoever can get it done by Friday. Could be, there was a CFO from Little Ferry that, former CFO, recommended. There's Donna Molino, who knows our, finds it's the best way to get this done, but I don't think she will, to be honest with you.
No, but she's not sure she's good.
Yeah, I think she isn't good. And then Ted has, you know, relationships and...
Did we talk to our auditor about this?
We need, we need CFO.
Did we talk to our auditor about this?
I have not spoken to Dieter.
Okay. And I'm going to say no, because I think we should discuss with our auditor. And I think if the auditor could bond with somebody, like Ryan.
Okay, keep going. It's a no.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Tom?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir. Are we good? Review of our auditor's bill for budget work. We received a $4,500 bill from our auditor for assistance in preparing the budget. I have a big problem with this for a lot of reasons. Mainly, number one, is we've never been billed this service in the past. Our prior auditors and even our current auditor did not bill us last year for this. So if we are to pay this bill, my concern is now the auditor is 10 grand more than the, you know, other quotes we received back in January. I have a big issue with this. It should be in his proposal of 35,000 to prepare to be our auditor. To help the Budget Committee prepare a budget, he's now billing us $4,500. I just want to get feedback from the government body. I don't think we have the money to do it. To quote our auditor, for your work. Let me hear something. Someone, someone call.
Well, the auditor has to sign the budget.
Yep.
And he has to fully understand what he's signing.
And he should be charged us.
Right, so it's a given that he's going to review the budget and sign it. I don't understand what the charge is for. Did we meet with him more than what's has ever been done in the past? Last year, how many times did it? Was there meetings with him? Same or more? I can only verify the meetings that I was in attendance. I don't know if there were additional, uh, meetings with him here at Borough or all communities.
We're not, we're not, yeah. Well, I don't think we have the money to. It should be included in his base pay. We were charged it last year. I have problems, I want a motion to authorize we cannot get it done.
I don't think it was part of the proposal.
Why didn't we pay last year?
What did we pay?
Why didn't we pay last year?
I don't know, but isn't because we had him at meetings here for the budget?
Same thing, same charges last year. Charges separate for that. $600 bill from the city area.
I don't mean these meetings.
Charges for an executive session on a pilot, charges for that. This is all about that. He isn't a day, he's going to be 15, 16. I'd like to, I'd like a motion to decline paying the bill.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
I would like a motion. And Mr. Yasi motioned seconded by Councilman Demotta. Any further discussion?
I am not, but I wouldn't vote to decline the bill. I haven't seen the bill, I haven't had the bill explained to me. I think table it would be more appropriate than...
There's a motion on the table right now.
To what? Now, I'm discussing it, that I'm going to vote, I'm not going to vote for this.
Okay.
I think we need to see the bill and discuss it. I think if the appropriate motion would have been to table it.
All right, and then, and then when that's, when that, when that information is had, Councilwoman, what changes? We don't have the money. It wasn't budgeted. What changes?
I would have to understand it and look at the budget and find out where the money could be, and maybe wait until...
So you're going to figure it out. So you're, you're going to pay. You're going to support paying.
If we have to.
Why would we have to?
Because I don't know what it's for or what the explanation is.
Preparing the budget, $4,500.
Something is going to...
It says for budget work, it doesn't say preparing the budget.
Councilwoman, please. Please. There's a motion on the table to deny it, seconded by Demotta. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Do you read the motion, please?
Motion is to deny...
To deny paying it.
The bill. Roll call.
Councilwoman Toots?
I don't, I don't, I think we need more explanation to pay this bill.
How you voting, yes or no?
Well, I don't deny it, so I guess I would like to, I'll say I'm not for denying it.
The motion is to deny the bill.
I should see what the bill is and what it indicates.
So you're voting no.
No.
Thank you.
Councilman Schiffman?
No.
Councilwoman Shortman?
No.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Conklin?
No.
Councilman Demotta?
Yes. Make a motion to table this until we see the bill.
Second.
The bill's been in your possession for a month. But that's fine. A month. And you have to see it.
Where is the bill?
Yeah, where is it?
It's been in your boxes for a month.
Not my box, I'm...
Okay, of course. Motion to table, was it seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, any discussion? Is there a specific date? Yeah, next meeting, October 9. I want an answer on what the governing body is going to do with the certification of funds that we do not have. Nor do we have to see a motion.
Did anybody reach out to him and speak to him about this?
No, I'm denying paying the bill. Why would I do that? The bill is for a service you should not be paid for. Simple. Simple. Can't be any simpler than that. He's billing us for a service you should not, he didn't bill us for last year. We've never been billed 10 years prior from a former auditor. If the government body pays this bill, it now makes him 10 grand more than a prior auditor.
I understand that.
But this is your question.
But wouldn't you reach out and see?
You, you requested a table, so I guess you should be the person to reach out.
And I will do that. That is not a problem.
Roll call.
As long as I have the council's consent and the mayor's consent, I will do that.
Roll call. The motion is to table. Till October 9.
Councilman Schiffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
No.
Councilman Conklin? Councilman Demotta?
No.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
I am Jay, we are moved to executive session. We have action possibly to be taken. Okay, adoption of resolution 2012 9.6. Authorization, I'm sorry. 9.6 granting unpaid sick leave for construction office employee. That motion, please. I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is this per contract that they were doing this, this sick leave? The, the extension, I believe, is till February?
Unpaid sick leave. Till February? No. Government, we're able to just hear my grant, I'm basically dated role in resolution, till February 17th, 13th. It's an employee, so we can't get specific to what issues are, but you guys...
I don't, I don't need a contractual to give this extended sick leave.
He doesn't have a contract, but following the Borough procedure and policy, this is the standard procedure.
But they ask for the record, the legislature recommends that the governing body takes this action.
Yes.
He has a responsible date of end, so...
This is an inspector?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Shortman?
Yes.
Councilman Yasi?
Yes.
Councilman Conklin?
Yes.
Councilman DeMara?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
Councilman Shipman?
Yes.
Resolution 2012 9.7, now we're authorizing to replace him with temporary help by the hiring of James Hoffman